NathanIvy.com. Mr. Ivy know the show must go on in far Cincinnati, man, I put on tunes made another flame beat for me to cook on. Raised dogs, closed fish, yeah, too strong. Team I chop it up at the chop shop. Top notch with that king flow, the hot shot cops watching, listen to the real jumping like hopscotch. Nobody hearted it. Oh, nope, they not. Not only citywide, but nationwide. Superlative, keep it locked like them Haitian guys. Put the truth in the airwaves, we talk about it. Brand new like the tech place, let's be about it. Who got the info by the AM? John will be the rapper, got him telling me when they play him. Staying in my lane, they ain't gotta OK him. Who the host with the scoop? Yeah, they gonna say him. Ivy so superlative like a bag of ripos. So you wear the bricks at Cincinnati Red Town. One time where my people at? Team and I where my people at? It's the five one third, yeah, you know the flow. What's the word Nate? Let them know the show. One time where my people at? Team and I where my people at? Good morning, everybody. Can you hear me? Am I plugged into the masses? I believe so. Hey, good morning, I'll say it again. A beautiful Wednesday, hump day. We made it. And as always, it is my pleasure to be with you, as I say every single morning. Good morning to everybody. Let me throw my number out to the ether. We got a guest scheduled at the bottom of the hour at eight thirty AM this morning. We're scheduled to be joined by Steve Meagerly. And he's running for, he's running for Cincinnati School Board. Yeah, that race is coming up in November. So here on the Nathan Ivy Show, we're gonna go into interview mode. And my endeavor is that each and every day, we'll talk with a candidate or maybe two. Uh, there's a lot of races, judicial candidates, uh, we'll be discussing it. I know that the NAACP is gonna be doing a judicial candidate forum. Uh, check it out. Um, and you could just, you know, you know what I found? Facebook is a good resource. Just go on Facebook and search. And you can see if there's any upcoming events. Um, and or if the candidates are doing events where you can be there and you can, you know, get a sense of who these folks are, because it's a serious situation. Okay? It's a serious situation with the school board. And a lot of parents are not satisfied. I just dropped my daughter off at a Cincinnati Public School this morning. She's come up in the Cincinnati Public School system. I live in Cincinnati, I'm a taxpayer. I'm invested in Cincinnati. I am a product of Cincinnati Public Schools as well. And so, uh, there's quite a lot to talk about. Quite a lot to talk about. So stick around for that, that'll be at the bottom of the hour. Along the way, if you want to share your thoughts about, well, perhaps the presidential debate. And you know what? Let me just say it straight up. I thought about this and I just owe you folks an apology. I humbly apologize about yesterday. So of course, I had told you that I got an invitation to go to the Democrat debate, which of course I did. And I got on the road yesterday and drove up, uh, to the site. And you know, for the most part, coming back was much better than going, even though it was dark. Uh, cuz it was rush hour and Columbus can be a nightmare, we all know that. Uh, but it was, it was okay. I mean, I, I've been in much worse traffic. You know, I've been in much worse, worse traffic where, you know, some, some, somebody's like got into an, a crash, automobile crash and there's wreckage across the entire, uh, you know, uh, road. And it's blocked for what appears to be an hour or so. I've gone through that before, so. Yesterday was not that bad, but I want to apologize because, so I get out there and I'm in line. And it was, uh, just to tell you through the experience, um, and I, I don't know how it was for everybody, because I'm sure there's different paths to do anything. Uh, but the debate yesterday was in Ohio. Uh, you can say Columbus, but it was really outside of Columbus. And, um, I, I do wanna share some takeaways. I'm sure many of you got a chance to watch it. Uh, it was in Westerville, Ohio just yesterday. So what happened is, uh, they have you drive to a particular spot, which was designated. You had to have a ticket to get into the lot, uh, which of course I had. So I get inside there, they had a fleet of buses. Think about the buses that you might see some of the professional athletes like, they're, they're driving the bus or they're on the bus from the airport to the, to the hotel. Those kind of buses, very, very luxurious, uh, nice seats, a nice, uh, headrest. And, uh, they had us wait on the buses. And then they drive you from the parking lot over to the Westerville College. And as you're driving in, you talk about police presence, man? I mean, it was something out of the movies, yo. But I already know, you know, you talking about having vice presidents, uh, Joe Biden there, uh, members of Congress, uh, senators? You talking about top flight security of the world, Craig? Completely with those like law enforcement drones? Straight out of Terminator, man? Straight out of Terminator. The drones are flying overhead and people were in line. The line, it could have been worse. I've been in worse lines, I'll be honest with you. But where I need to apologize is this, this is all on me. Because I'm at the line and I see, I'm super observant, right? So I'm watching everything and I see people are coming and they're talking to people in the line. And then I'm reading the nonverbals and people aren't happy. I'm like, oh snap. Boom, I knew what it was immediately. They're about to cut it off. So what happened is as I was in line, they cut it off and said that they had reached capacity. Now, we grown folks, VIPs, there's never capacity. Jay-Z and Beyonce come rolling up, they walking straight in, you can believe that. So, you know, I kinda stood around a little bit to see if I knew someone or something like, see what was gonna happen. But it was pretty much dead, they cut it off. I'd say three or four, at least two hundred people were in line, at least. Uh, they were all told no. And where I apologize is this, I should have got there earlier. Yeah, I had some things going on yesterday, but in hindsight, I should have got there early. And if I had, which is typically what I do, I like to be the first in line, cuz I know how ish goes. So that's what the deal is. And I apologize to you because I was there for you, I wasn't there for me. I mean, for me, it's easier to stay home and watch it on TV. I was there for you. And, uh, I promise you moving forward that I will be first in line. That ain't never gonna happen again. Okay? So I don't feel good about that, but I tried to make the best about it. And, um, and, and I did a video, I wanted to let you folks know that I was there, uh, that I did make every attempt. But I just got there later. Uh, I was within the time zone now. Uh, but as I teach my daughter, I teach her this. On time is late, you gotta be early, which is what I typically am. And this time it cost me. Now, if I was there an hour earlier, would I have gotten in? I think so, cuz Donnie B was there. And she told me she got there about an hour, maybe a little bit less than that before me, and she got in. She said she had just barely got in. Uh, but I don't know, there were people in line who had been there forty-five, fifty minutes, you know? You should have saw the faces. It was not good. It was not good. But you know what? If nothing else, I like to believe that I have a self-deprecating, uh, way about myself and an ability to laugh at myself, even when I do Gilligan stuff. Um, so I just took it like that, I would do the same thing again tomorrow. You seen, I'm there, trust me. It was well worth it on some respects, because I'm exercising that go out and do it, you know, muscle, uh, either way. So I did have a couple of options. One option was to, one option was to go over to some kind of party. But it just seemed like Loserville over there. I ain't got, uh, all the cool kids is inside. I wanna be with the cool kids. I didn't wanna go to no damn watch party. Uh, yo, I got a watch party at home, yo, it's called my house. Where everything's set up comfortably for me, that's my watch party, I watch it with the wifey. Uh, I wanna say with these losers. You should have saw some of the faces. Like I said, man, I love being alive. I was alive and able to drive there and come home. So at the end of the day, things could have been a lot worse. And the drive coming back was so much better than going up there, even though it was dark. I don't mind driving in the dark. And, um, I just made the best of it. You know, I tried to make the best out of it and just learn from it. Like I said, that won't happen again. That was on me. That was on me, that won't happen again, cuz I was there for you. I was not there for me. I mean, the prestige of being there don't mean a fucking thing to me whatsoever. I want to give you some exclusive coverage, that's what I'm all about. And I feel like I failed you. And, uh, you know, I'll, I'll do better moving forward. You know, that's how I look at it. So that's what happened with the presidential debate last night. And I can't wait to talk to Donnie B, cuz I know she got a chance to get inside, just to get her bird, her, her, her bird's eye view, right? You know, she was actually there, so hopefully I catch up with her, uh, at the very least by Friday. This is just me podcast, should be very, very interesting. And there was some long faces, boy. Woo, woo. I start talking to people, man, I'm like, aw, man. This is the hope line, I started cracking jokes like, we all hope we getting in, but we're not. Right? And they're looking at me like, who the hell is this guy? I start talking with one dude. He's like, man, I drove down from Cleveland, I got a hotel and everything, man. I guess I'm gonna go to the watch party, try to make the best out of it. That's, that's not my vibe. Mm-mm, I'm not a make the best out of it guy. I'm all or nothing, that's who I am. Either I get exactly what I'm looking for, I don't want a goddamn thing. That's just me. All right? So it'd been a whole bunch of la, sad faces, we should have been. People were like, go to the watch party, Nate? Hell no, you go to the watch party. No, 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 no. I didn't drive up to go to the watch party. I drove up to go into, uh, the actual event. That's it. That's it, that's, that was my, my target. If I'm not hitting my target, we'll holler at you next time. Um, and there will be a next time, you know, if I live long enough, hmm, something tells me, uh, there'll be more opportunities. Uh, especially coming up next year. So, uh, again, uh, this just, just to me, when things happen like this, I don't, I don't complain. I don't point fingers, I look at myself. You know, I, things don't happen to me, I make things happen. I'm not one of these people that's, oh, well, it's me, I'm in the back of the line. Soon as they said, I thought to myself, Negro, you should have been here earlier, period. There ain't no blame, ain't no passing a buck, it's on me. But I got you in the future, trust me with that. So again, my apologies. So let's talk about the debates. Did you get a chance to watch? Even if you watched the highlights and clips, which if you're not, you don't have a lot of time, sometimes that can get you by, you can go on YouTube, you can watch all of the clips and everything. Who do you think, uh, stood out to you? Uh, do you have a new, do we have a new frontrunner? What are the major news publications saying? And I wanna run through the headlines with you. Uh, good morning and welcome back to the Nathan Ivy Show, y'all ready? All right, I'll say it again, five one three eight seven three seven one three four. Pardon me, we've got about fifteen minutes until the bottom of the hour. And I've got a guest scheduled to come on at the bottom of the hour. And we'll be chopping it up about the school board for a little while. Uh, so between now and then, if you wanna share your thoughts, you've got an open door. And after that, of course, the door will be open as well. Good morning. Yeah, I'm not a complainer, that's, that's, I was, I'm not built that way, I don't pass the buck, it's, it's on me. But you know, honestly, hmm, I won't say that I had a good time. Hmm, uh, cuz no, I didn't have a good time. But everything is an experience, it's quite interesting. Quite interesting, many had law enforcement with the leans all over the damn state up there. We drove past, I don't know if that was a football field or something, it was just nothing but law enforcement, vehicles, drones. I'm talking about the real good drones. Cyber dying systems. Shout to my folks that know that Terminator lore. That was a movie series on Schwarzenegger back in the day, it was groundbreaking in the eighties. And they're still remaking the damn movies. They're still remaking them. Uh, good morning. Again, five one three. Eight seven three. Seven one. Three four. If you like to share your thoughts this morning, again, I've got a guest coming in at the bottom of the hour. But we do have time. Uh, we got a call on the line right now, let's go straight to it. Good morning, welcome to the show.
Good morning, Mr. Ivy, this is your Westside Connection, drop squad fifty-two. Uh, how are you, sir?
I'm doing great, how you doing?
Oh, I'm doing good. Um, Mr. Ivy, I watched the, the debate last night. And even though it had twelve people up there and a lot of people didn't have a lot of time to say very much. My observation, the one guy that stood out above everyone else was the smallest man on the stage. Mayor Pete Booty Judge. Keep your eye on him, Nate.
Now, you know that's not his name. Boot edge edge.
What's that?
Boot edge edge.
Nate, I only have a high school diploma, okay? Give me a break. Mayor Pete Booty.
That's not an excuse.
Okay, all right, all right, I'll, I'll, I'll try harder, sir. But, but Mr. Ivy, he, from, to me, he really stood out. And it's very difficult to stand out on a stage with twelve people. But it was because, like I said yesterday, Nate, it was the CNN, um, uh, moderators. Nate, to start the show off with asking people who are trying to become president, to ask them about impeaching the city president, Nate, that made no damn sense. So again, my ob, observation as being a black not Democrat, looks like Pete Booty Judge is gonna possibly move ahead of Kamala Harris big time and push her all the way to the back. And it's gonna be Elizabeth Warren, Joe Biden, Bernie Sanders. And the alternative, believe it or not, Democrats, your alternative to those three old white people is gonna be Mayor Pete Booty Judge from South Bend, Indiana. That's my take, Mr. Ivy. Uh, have a good show today, I'm looking forward to all your interviews. And I hope you will give us a little bit more as the show progresses on what you saw at the Democrat debate amongst the people, whether you got in or didn't get in. I'm squad fifty-two dropping the sock, what, what's up?
I said, I will do that.
Okay, have a good show, drop squad fifty-two, dropping signs, anyone who wants to catch it, peace.
Peace, appreciate it. He says Pete Boot Edge Edge. Your lack of education is not gonna spare you here. Uh-uh. Is that right? Hmm. What'd you think about the back and forth between, uh, O'Rourke and Boot Edge Edge? Over O'Rourke's assault rifle buyback plan? What'd you think about, uh, since he brought up Pete Boot Edge Edge and Tulsi Gabbard? Tulsi Gabbard has found her go-to look, hasn't she? White suit? Wanna get your thoughts about it? Uh, five one three eight seven three seven one three four. So I'm in line. So the type of people with that kind of thing are gonna be like, you know, people that are close to the Democrat Party. Because it was a Democrat debate. So, uh, I did see, uh, a lot of Cincinnati, well, I saw some Cincinnati people. Okay, I saw some Cincinnati people there. Um, but most of the people I saw on Facebook, uh, they were already inside, they were smarter than I was. They already got there early, they were inside. And, uh, so Cincinnati did show up, you know, it was definitely a Cincinnati contingent there. A lot of people that are close to the, are either Democrat candidates, like, uh, there were a lot of elected official, or some elected officials here for the Cincinnati area who elected, uh, folks. And then, you know, you gonna have, you know, your young Dems, right? You know, the, all of, all the Democrat, you know, organizations operating in the state. Who did I, I met, uh, didn't meet her, but almost got a chance to meet Simone Sanders. She was whisked by very, 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 very fast, but a beautiful sister. And I think she looks even better in person than she looks on television. I took a photograph with Abby Phillips, who is in my fantasy file. And you could tell my wife, I don't care. Uh, beautiful sister, beautiful. And so I'm standing there and I see, I'm like, oh shit. Is that Abby Phillips? Man, you know me, I don't got. Walked straight up to her. And, uh, she, I read the situation very quickly. She is, for, for, if you don't know what I'm talking about, go to my Facebook page, you can see a couple of the photographs I put up. She is a correspondent for CNN, black, female, dark skin. She's actually a writer for, can't call it off the top of the head. Uh, but I think she does great work, I've seen a lot of her on television. Um, I just gave her some well wishes, I know she, she probably is doing her commentary thing. Uh, who else did I see? Oh, I saw some people, I saw one person try to act like he didn't see me. You ever go somewhere? I, I hate fake people. I'd rather a mofo tell me straight to my face. In fact, I can respect you better that way. Then when we in Cincinnati, oh, Nathan, there's so many weak ass men in this city, I'm telling you. There's too many weak ass men, some real G's out there, but too many weak ass men in this city. But it is what it is. Uh, so I saw somebody who, I won't say we're super friendly, but I had just ran into you at an event and it was all dapping me up, Nathan, we get up there, you acting like you don't see me? Oh, okay. Mental check, we'll talk about that later, cuz I am that one. Yo, B, you, oh, now you know me again, we back in Cincinnati? That will happen, but with no names, though. I'll keep it between myself, but you, you know what I'm talking about, I'm sure you been there before, seen some fake old people. You know what I'm saying? When your normal surroundings, they, hey, hey, what are you chopping you up? Hey, what up? You get around some missed company, all of a sudden, they waiting for you to come, I don't know what the hell these people are, man. I ain't like that. If I know you, I know you. Period. It don't matter scenario, I ain't, who, who are these people? But you know how it is, man. Not everybody is, is built the same way. It is what it is. Um, that's not a lot more, I rented to Crystal Kendricks, the voice of Black Cincinnati. Um, it's not a whole lot more, again, I, I, I was with the nun, the non-cool kids. So I would have had so much more to show you and to tell you had I gotten inside the velvet ropes. Uh, but I did not, so I don't know what Studio Sixty-four was like inside. I have no idea for those that follow my, follow my flow on that one. Um, and it wasn't a whole lot to see outside, because we were outside of the stadium. And I mean, all I can really tell you is, um, you know, they have some food trucks. That's it, got, I got some food from a food truck, it was like Korean barbecue, that was good. I got a C cup. Uh, that's what it was called, a C cup. And it's like, you know, some Korean barbecue and vegetables and stuff, and some rice in a cup, so I got that. Um, I feel like I'm pretty thin here with the observations, uh, to be honest with you. Um, that pretty much is scratching the bottom of the barrel right there in terms of what I can actually communicate to you. Um, let me see here, I mean, you know, and, and the reason why I say VIPs, I'm not saying it like, you know, like some celebrity. But I've seen this before, so I'm standing in line, right? And you got people who obviously are, are with the event, they're official, and they're walking back. And so they'll recognize somebody that they know in the line and do that little, hey, come with me, kinda thing. And then, and then walk them to the front of the line so they can get in. And that's why they overbooked. They overbooked because they gave out the tickets. But then VIPs, and when I say VIPs, I'm saying people that know people. You know, if, if I had known somebody that was in the line, I would have got in too. But I did not. So that's what I meant by that. So nobody can tell me that there's capacity, it's never capacity, depends on who you are. You know, if people recognize you, you can get your ass in there. You know what I'm saying? I do it all the time. That's how I know. I just wasn't able to do it this time. Uh, five one three eight seven three. Seven one three four, I do have about six minutes if somebody wants to get a call in. And then at the bottom of the hour, and probably for about, no, fifteen, twenty, maybe even thirty minutes, we'll see how the conversation goes with Steve Meagerly. Amnesia, Meagerly, I hope I'm not mangling his last name. I'm older now. Uh, and again, i, if you are aware of this candidate running for school board or you have specific questions, you already know, line them up. Line them up. Line them up. Uh, I'm even open to reflections on my conversation, uh, yesterday. Uh, with a man who a lot of people hope becomes the next Hamilton County prosecutor, and that would be Fanaa Rucker. I thought it was a great interview. I thought that Fanaa answered all the questions. Um, I thought that we got a sense of the difference between him and Joe Dieters. Uh, I asked him about Gabe Davis, I asked him about Tracy Hunter. I asked him about what are specific policy differences between you and Dieters? He talked about some of the things that he wants to put in place. He talked about wha, what it would mean for black people in Hamilton County if he becomes the Hamilton County prosecutor, and you can check it out on yesterday's pod, it's up right now. If you missed it, please share it. And, uh, tell me what you think. Tell me what you think. I haven't been on social media or anything like that, so I got off the air with you yesterday. Had some things to do before I got on the road, got on the road, and you know, I was pretty much caught up with that until I got back home last night. Uh, getting back home was so much easier than going up there because it was less traffic. And, uh, it was kinda smooth sailing. I hit a little bit of, a little bit of, you wanna say, you know, traffic in, in Columbus, a little bit there. Those Columbus turns and winding roads and ish. But for the most part, it was pretty straight. It's pretty straight, and I was home. And, uh, the wifey was nice enough, we, we talked on the phone the whole way back. We were on the phone talking about, uh, just the event. And the same things I said to you, I said to her, this is on me. You know, I, I'm not a sit back and, life's just gonna happen and we'll see what happens kinda guy. Uh, that's not me. I'm more of a, I wanna determine what happens through my own actions kinda guy. That's more me, so we had a good conversation, talked politics and some stuff. You know what I'm saying? We talked about the debates. Um, uh, I feel like I'm just coming up really, really thin here, because again, I, I pretty much shared with you the most of. I did put up a video, which you might find interesting, that was up. That's up right now on my Facebook page, or not, I don't know. And you tell me. Like I said, I did not, I was not going to the, to the, whatever it was called. I'm not even sure where it was. And you know, some people, what they did is they got hotels up in Columbus, got up there earlier and then just spent the night, which is so smart, because who wants to drive back to Cincinnati at, at one? Now, I will, cuz I'm trying to get back to my babies. You know what I'm saying? I love my bed. There's no bed in the world better than the bed that I have in my bedroom, literally. Okay, it's specifically made for this body. And so I would, but a lot of people just got, or some people just got a hotel room, went back to hotel room, they're probably driving back right now, they'll drive back later today. Uh, let me greet, greet the choppers here before we take, uh, any other phone calls or anything. Tracy Rice, hi, good to see you, Tracy. Renee Rice, good morning, everyone, hey, good to see you, Renee. Pamela Rice, good morning, Nate and the choppers, good morning, Pamela. Pamela got, man, she, Pamela don't play. Since a V Rice, morning. CG Dub Rice, good morning, choppers. Ray Rice, grand risings all. Sharp's in the house, he writes, good morning. John, hashtag glorious writes, hi, how you doing, glorious? Uh, Brian writes, good morning, Brenda writes, happy Wednesday, it is a happy Wednesday. It is, again, I, I, I like to think that I've got my priority straight sometime. And my priority is life. You know, these little malt, these little things that happen, sometimes things happen, especially when you don't put the proper action in place. Things happen. I don't get too high or too low about that kinda stuff, man. Life is beautiful. Uh, Mason Mahler writes, morning, Nate and the choppers. He writes, Ukraine in the membrane. Uh, the Ukraine, you look, uh, international politics came up quite a bit last night. We'll get into it, and again, we'll break it down more in the nine AM hour. Uh, complete with audio. Uh, Bunky writes, what's up, Nate and the choppers, good morning to you, Bunky. Did you get there long after Donnie B? Uh, Donnie B was smarter than me, I think she went up earlier and she got in there about, I think she got there about maybe fifty minutes before I did. And when I say there, I mean to the actual line. Um, I think she was there about fifty minutes, and again, in a situation like this, that's enough. That's enough time. And then I texted her, saying, hey, I'm here in line, and she said, I barely got in. She says, she said it was packed in there, which I can imagine, a lot of interest. Uh, a lot of interest for an event like that. Uh, Kush Rice, good morning, Nate and the choppers. And again, I re, I arrived well within the zone. And you, you had like a ninety-minute window in which you had to at least get to the parking lot where the shuttle was, and then from the shuttle, they take you from the shuttle over to the college where the event was. All security ish. All security. Uh, Magnanimous King writes, good morning, Kush Rice, good morning, Nate and the choppers. Tracy Rice, they need to chop the debate down to four people tops, too many damn folk. Is that right? Kamala Harris made us, made a case last night. How many believe that Kamala Harris made a case last night? That's what Magnanimous King writes. Mason Mahler writes, Kamala came out for women's reproductive rights and that made a statement. Uh, Magnanimous writes, but all in all, still on the fence, huh? Tracy writes, Warren, Biden, Buddha, and Beto. Is that right? Brian writes, Abby Phillips, is that, is she in the files, Nate? She is in the files. Abby Phillips is in the fantasy file, you can believe that. Intelligent sister. And beautiful. I am a man. None of that new masculinity ish over here, which we gotta talk about more. Uh, let me go to the phones, they said, I'm, I'm expecting a phone call this morning from a school board candidate. Let's go straight to the phones, good morning, welcome to the show.
Morning, Nathan, it's Steve Meagerly.
Hey, Steve, how you doing?
I'm great.
Yeah, thank you for your time this morning.
Oh no, it's, it's a pleasure. It's an honor to be on your show.
Oh, great, great. Well, let's get into it, man. You know, Cincinnati, uh, school board, um, is a very important role. And, uh, it's about the future of our children. And I got a chance to meet up with you a couple of days over the NAACP, uh, forum, which was good to connect, uh, actually meet you. And not just, uh, see these videos and read about you. But I mean, give the people a sense of who you are. Tell us a little bit about your background. Where'd you work? Where'd you grow up?
So I'm from Northern Kentucky originally, um, Nathan. I grew up in Covington. My dad was a policeman. Uh, then became a lawyer. We, uh, grew up in Latonia and then moved to Edgewood and Villa Hills. Uh, I went to the Covington Independent Public Schools and the Kenton County Public Schools and then, uh, graduated from Covenant Catholic High School, uh, one of the Catholic high schools in Northern Kentucky. Went to Jesuit College, got a scholarship up to Buffalo, which is a lot like Cincinnati. Uh, then went to law school at Ohio Northern and, uh, came back home and been practicing law for about thirteen years. I had a general practice. Uh, worked in, worked in politics for a long time. Uh, most recently worked down at City Hall and got a touch of that, uh, nonsense down there at City Hall. And, uh, after working, uh, for council member Jeff Pastor, I transitioned, uh, back to private practice and, uh, I'm now a small business owner and then practicing law, uh, again, doing something I love. And so I'm here, uh, throwing my hat in the arena because I think that our schools are a lot more important than, uh, city government. And because our schools, uh, need a lot of help.
Uh, thank you for your time this morning. I appreciate it. Listen, Chappers, if you have any questions, please send them to me and I'll try to mix them in. Okay. So you grew up in Kentucky and, uh, worked in politics, uh, over in Kentucky. The first time I ever heard about you, and again, Steve, again, what I'm trying to get a sense, let me, let me set the table here with this. What I'm trying to get a sense of with my interview with you is a couple of things because I do have some concerns. So let's just start right there. Um, I'm concerned, and again, I'm sure there are great answers to this, but I believe instead of speculating, I like to talk directly to people and let them people fuck speed for themselves. So one concern that I had when I heard about you was when you became, uh, on the staff of Jeff Pastor. And I've seen these articles about stuff that had happened to you with campaign finance. Can you talk about that? And the reason why is not to dread of anything negative, but I'm trying to get a sense of you as a man. And I believe that our actions, whether expunged or not, still give us a sense. And I want to know, you know, whatever you learned from that and get a sense of who you are now because a couple of days ago, somebody said, uh, when I said you were coming on, she was like, uh, is that the criminal? That was, that was the, the response I got from a listener. Oh, the criminal's coming on? I said, okay, well, let me let this man get a chance to explain himself. So can you explain what happened?
So ten years ago, and let, let's put this into perspective. Ten years ago, I made a campaign donation to someone, uh, who was putting together, uh, a, a mailer that was discussing, uh, things about a candidate. Uh, it, you know, it, it violated the law. I, it was a mistake.
Right.
Uh, I pled guilty to a misdemeanor, no difference. I pled guilty to a misdemeanor, moved on with my life. It was a mistake. I've apologized, uh, and that's about it.
Okay. And, um, you know, when I, when I read that, there was a lot of concern because the nature of it was like sexual orientation, right? And there was a lot of concern.
No, that's not true.
That's not true?
That's not true.
Okay. So what, so what was the nature of it?
So there was a candidate running and I, you know, I, I would really like to talk about why we have failing public schools in the city of Cincinnati and how I think we need transformational change in our public schools. But just briefly, uh, there was a candidate running for office who, who had filed bankruptcy on fifty thousand dollars worth of credit cards. There was a candidate, the same candidate who got into a domestic violence situation. And there's, and the same candidate, uh, took campaign contributions from a registered federally convicted child pornographer. Uh, for whatever reason, uh, the person who put them, put the mailer together did not have a paid for buy, which was a minor technical campaign fine, campaign finance violation. And that's it. Period. That's it.
Okay. Because what was reported was that you had a role in anonymously paying for pamphlets with anti-gay overturns. Right?
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, let's put it all out there.
It was anonymous.
Yeah, let's put it all out there.
Because it didn't, it did, it was anonymous because it didn't say pay for buy, period. That's how it was anonymous.
Okay.
So, and you know, this, and, and I appreciate the fact that you mentioned that this came up when I started working for council member pastor and that was a privilege and honor to serve the people of Cincinnati. And this came up in Equality PAC. Uh, met with council member pastor nine, they issued a press release. And after meeting with a lot of leaders in the LGBTQ community who had met me, who had never met me before, uh, they, you know, they issued a press release that said that, uh, Mr. Meagerly reaffirmed his regret and repentance for what happened a decade ago, based on the following statement. Equality PAC acknowledges that Mr. Meagerly holds no prejudice and recognizes equal rights for members of the LGBTQ community. So in my opinion, this is over. I, I show no prejudice towards any human being whatsoever. And it's deplorable if people want to attack people for their sexual orientation. And as a member of the school board, I will stand up for every student so that every student is, is, uh, has a chance to succeed. In my opinion, every child, every child is a gift from God. Every child should have a chance to succeed. And every child in, in education is the great equalizer. So, um, that, I mean,
Sounds good.
I'd love to talk, I, 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 you know, I want to talk about the issues, Nathan.
We, we, we gonna talk about all the issues, but this is an issue for the reason you just brought it up. See, when I heard about it, eh, the, the, the thought I had was, okay, so if he's out here with these anti-gay pamphlets, is he the right person to represent students? Who might have a different sexual orientation? They might identify as LGBTQ. So let's see that for me, that becomes a very real reason and very valid to ask you these questions about that, to try to get to the bottom of it.
That's fair.
Right. So I mean, these are all issues.
I, I think we just got to the bottom of it and I'm ready to talk about how we're going to fix our failing schools for African Americans in our community.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. I hear you talk a lot about African Americans. I mean, you talk about, you tout that you work with Jeff Pastor, who was an African American Republican. Uh, you talk about how, you know, the African American firefighters and what they're trying to do with issue fifteen is a part of your platform. I hear you talk about that a lot. What is the, the, the composition of African Americans and CPS right now? You have that number offhand?
CPS is, yeah, it's seventy percent. Seventy percent of the consumers of our, since, se- seventy percent of our consumers of our Cincinnati public schools are African American. So that's the vast majority.
Right.
So yes, we need, we need, we need to be making sure that African American children have a chance to succeed, period.
Right. Absolutely.
And I don't, and I, and, and I don't think that the current members of the Board of Education or my opponents are either A, serious enough about tackling these problems that we have in our schools or actually have a real plan to solve, uh, solve the, why CPS continues to get a failing grade from the state continuously, including an F in graduation rate. When twenty-five percent of kids in CPS don't graduate, that's one in four kids are not going to have an opportunity to succeed. They're not going to get an opportunity, uh, to learn a vocation or a trade at their neighborhood high school like they should if they're not college bound. So these are things that I think that, uh, that I'm very passionate about and I'm very compassionate about. Uh, and that's why I'm running for the school board.
Uh, that's great to hear. Uh, I want to go back to, to your involvement with the black community because like I said, I mean, I, I've been watching and reading, apparently watching and hearing about, uh, you know, what your platform is and you bring up the black community quite a bit. And speaking of which, man, you, I gotta say this to you. There is an image, your campaign image on your Facebook pu- uh, uh, Facebook page. I don't know. It's something about it that concerns me, man. You know what I'm talking about? It's you and it's like a whole bunch of little black kids and they're all wearing your T-shirt. You know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, that, that, those were, those were, there, there were parents who, uh, who believed that we have failing schools and they want, uh, those children to have a chance to succeed. And those, those parents had their kids walk in the black family reunion pla- parade. I was proud to walk in the black family reunion parade because that shows what I'm about. I'm about those kids. And I'm about those kids having a chance to succeed. So I'm sorry if you may take offense, but I mean, that's, that's who I am and that's who I'm going to stand up for as a member of the school board.
No, I don't take offense to it. I'm just concerned, and I call this out again. This might be a different interview, Steve, than the other places because I don't want to ask the same questions. People can go back and look at your interview, other interviews for that. I want to get a sense of you. So when I see a white male, I'll be straight with you. When I see a white male, uh, sometimes I feel like, are these black people being used as props? You know, and I, when I saw that video, I mean, I saw that photograph that you have on your Facebook page right now, as I read the faces, I don't know, man. Uh, what's the story behind that photograph? Do you know those families? Do these people that you know? I mean, how did that all happen?
Those are people I, I, I reached out to some people that I engaged with at City Hall. And I said, hey, I'm partici- I'm participating in the black family reunion parade. You know, I'd love to have some volunteers walk in the parade with me. And they said, absolutely. No doubt. We'll, we'll have our kids there. Now, they may not be smiling because it was nine o'clock in the morning on a Saturday morning, which what five or six year old or seven year old wants to go, you know, do anything at eight o'clock or nine o'clock on a Saturday morning? So, you know, but.
Yeah. I was looking at the faces of the adults as well. I mean, uh, my non-verbal skills are very sharp. I don't know, man. I'm just, as a black man, I'm, I'm highly sensitive. And just so you know, I had a problem with David Mann, who was a white male Democrat who in his latest, his, his reelection campaign, he had black kids run around with, with white wigs on. And I'm like, hold on, we, the, the issues of our community are more serious than that. So I don't have no toleration with folks that want to use us as props. So that's what I'm trying to get to it.
Uh, that, it would be insulting to you and the members of your community if African American children are being used as props. I totally one hundred percent agree.
So, uh, you know, what is your educational background? And outside of working for pastor now, your endeavor for rucking, uh, for the run for city school board, what's been your involvement in the black community? Like what organizations have you worked with, things like that?
Well, as a lawyer for thirteen plus years, I represented African Americans in, in different legal matters over my career and got to know them. And I have friends in the African American community. I'm, uh, I, I mean, my next door neighbor is an African American. Uh, and I, I have lots of relationships in the African American community. I mean, am I a member of the NAACP? No. But do I know people and met, you know, leaders in the African American community? Absolutely. And, uh,
So you, you know, black people?
Yes. And I listen to them and they tell me that our schools are failing.
Okay. Okay. Well, let's get into, you know, your platform. What are like some of the big issues that you want to address?
Well, that's a, that's a great question. So number one, CPS ranks number five seventy-one out of six oh eight on the state report card. That's failing. Uh, they just got another D on their state report card. They got an F in progress, an F in graduation rate and multiple Ds on their state report card. That's something that needs to stop immediately. Uh, one thing that I, that I talk about that we need to do is we need to expand vocational and technical education. Right now, only one point six percent of CPS students are enrolled in vocational or technical. And all the programs are headquartered at Woodward. Uh, it's sprinkled across the district. And when you have only forty-five percent of, uh, CPS students graduating, going on to college and you take Walnut Hills out and the numbers, you know, thirty percent at Aiken and it's thirty percent at Path and it's thirty percent at Woodward of kids going to college. I think that, you know, we need to create opportunities in the local neighborhood schools and bring back the vocational and technical so that children who aren't college bound for whatever reason can learn a vocation or a trade and rise into the middle class. Um, another thing that I would do is, uh, we need to expand the number of African Americans, uh, especially black school teachers in our CPS schools. Uh, CPS doesn't publish the number of how many African American school teachers there are. Uh, but across the nation, it's about two or three percent. And their studies show that when African American children, uh, are, have interaction with an African American school teacher, uh, their numbers go up, their test scores go up. And I actually have a plan where I want to partner with historically black colleges and universities like Hampton, like Central State, like Wilberforce, like, uh, Grambling, uh, like Kentucky State. And if those teachers come to the city and partnering with the Cincinnati Federation of Teachers, if they sign a five-year contract, not a two-year contract like the Teach for America contract, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna give these teachers a signing bonus. Uh, and, and then partner with the city. And this is where my work at the city will come in handy and my experience at the city comes in handy. And use community development block grant funds from HUD to give down payment assistance for those teachers. Because the starting school teachers wage, they're still eligible for HUD funding for down payment assistance to buy a house so that they can, they can grow and they can prosper and they can live in the city. So that's an act. Those are two things that I would do, uh, day one when elected to the school board.
Uh, speaking with Steve Meagerly, he is, I, I'm not mispronouncing your name, am I, Steve?
It's Meagerly.
I'm sorry, Meagerly, sorry. Sorry. Now, now I want to get it right. I want to get it right. So Steve, Steve Meagerly.
No, the, the, the first day of law school, my, uh, property professor said, well, where is Mr. McGurley? And that stuck for two and a half years of law school. So.
Yeah.
It's fine. It's a hard German name to pronounce.
Mr. Br- yeah, Mr. McGurley is much worse, I think. So yeah, I'm, I'm not too far off. So you, you're a lawyer, man. It goes back to a question that I asked earlier and I'm not sure if you answered, like, what is your education background? Because, you know, you're running for school board and for me personally, I am very partial and biased toward people that have actually had in-classroom experience, uh, that have actually led, that have actually led for, for good reasons, right? You know, for good reasons, because they're going to have an insight that you just can only get if you do the experience and you've got that kind of responsibility. Now that does not mean that a person without that experience couldn't do that job well, but I think for me, and again, to give you some insight, I worked in a CPS school. I know how hard it is. I've led a classroom. I've been responsible. I've had issues with kids and parents and been ten hour, twelve hour days at one school. Uh, this is no joke. So how do you think that you can perform and actually deliver and you don't have an educational background or do you?
So let me say this. I'm the grandson of a college professor and I'm the son of a college professor. So I, education has always been very important in my life. And so here's, here's what I'm going to say, Nathan. Is that our schools need transformational change, not incremental change. And with all due respect to one of my opponents who is a school teacher and he's a special ed teacher, and I heard that you had a special place in your heart for special education teachers and I agree. And, uh, you know, CPS already has two retired school teachers on the board. And they have four individuals who have been, had significant nonprofit professional experience. And I think that the school board, when it handles a six hundred and twenty million dollar budget, you need people who, um, have critical thinking skills and have research skills and things like that to get in, into it and get into the meat of it. And do I think that it's important to have an education background? Yes. But do I think that it should be a prerequisite or a condition precedent to be on the school board? Absolutely not. And you know, here's the thing. If you, I, I just wholeheartedly believe that you can't make transformational change in a failing school system like CPS. When number one, you were appointed by the Board of Education that is defending the fact that they got another failing grade or you're a member of the Cincinnati Federation of Teachers and, uh, you're running for the Board of Education while you're still collecting a check from the district. I just think that that is very problematic that you cannot realistically make transformational change when you're a member of the institution and co- and trying to come out of it and make, make the changes that we need. So every chance has a chance to, every child has a chance to succeed in the CPS schools.
I'm speaking with Steve Meagerly. He's running for Cincinnati School Board, uh, and the election's coming up in November. Well, Steve, uh, let me kind of pick some of that apart, man. I mean, uh, you know, when I say education background, I don't mean whether people in your family have gotten college degrees. What I mean is, have you ever worked in a Cincinnati public schools? And there's various levels of doing that. Now, I'm partial to people that have had, had, who have had the responsibility. But, you know, have you volunteered at any CPS schools to this point?
Well, so we, we've been very active in the Paul Cristo Ray School, which is a, uh, school ran by the Sisters of Charity. And the model is great. And I think that we need to take a look at that when we're expanding vocational and technical education. That school pulls from the same demographics that CPS. And that school in its five years of existence has a hundred percent graduation rate, a hundred percent college acceptance rate and a hundred percent of the kids receiving a scholarship to go to college. Now, I've been involved.
Is that a CPS school?
No, no, it's a Catholic school.
Right, okay. So that doesn't matter then, Steve. That doesn't matter. That's window dress. So the answer is, the, I'm sorry, go ahead. But the, it sounds like to me the answer is no. You have not taken the time to at least even volunteer for a Cincinnati public school. There's a lot of them. But yet you're running for school board and you have no educational background. Make that make sense.
Nathan, the answer is no. I haven't volunteered in, in CPS schools. Now, I don't think, you, you and I are going to agree. I, I think we're going to agree to disagree on this point that be, you know, that you don't need education experience to sit on a board. Let's take Procter and Gamble, for example. Proct- I'm sure that there are members of the board of Procter and Gamble that do not know how to do logistics and do not know how to make soap and do not know how to make, uh, products that pee in razors. Okay? The board, the primary purpose of a Cincinnati school board member is to be a policymaker. And I think that policymakers should not necessarily have a slant one way or the other. They should be objective individuals. And when policies and things are brought by the superintendent of education, that person who's making decisions should not have a slant towards either slant towards the teachers or a slant towards, uh, the Board of Education. You know, that, that, that's, you know, I think that having people, I, I think, I think that having people on the Board of Education who aren't from education, when you have a failing school system for generations, i- is something that we need change. And I just don't, and again, I'm going to say it again. I don't think we can make, I don't think that either of my opponents who come from the education background are going to be able to make transformational change. And I'm running because I, you know, I'm running in part because nothing in life is more liberating than fighting for a cause larger than oneself. And that's what I'm doing because I see kids down the street from me and I hear shootings down the street from me. And it's because these kids have not had a, a, and a chance to succeed because we have failing public schools. How many parents have had to bury their children because of our failing public schools, Nathan? How many, how many children i- have not graduated from high school because of our failing public school system, Nathan?
True.
And how many children, Nate, a- and Nate, and Nathan, how, how many children have been shuffled from a pipeline from school to prison because of our failing public schools?
But here's what's going to happen though, Steve.
We, we, we have, we have a, Nathan, we- We, we, we have, we have a, Nathan, we, we have a strategic plan that just got passed by the Board of Education. And here's what it prioritized in this order. It priorit, it prioritized enrollment in college, enlistment in the military, and employment. So the CPS Board of Education would rather shuffle your child off to the military in a place like Iran or Turkey and get shot at where they may learn a lifelong skill or teaching it in our schools. So these are the problems that we have in our Cincinnati public schools. And I'm sorry that I don't have an MED after my name, and I'm sorry that I've never fought in a classroom. But I can tell you that I have the passion for the children and I'm going to be an advocate for the students, the, the parents and the taxpayers of CPS in that order.
Okay, sounds good. Although I do have, still have some concerns because what's gonna happen is, if you're elected, you're gonna be at a disadvantage.
When I'm elected, Nathan, when, when I'm elected. I'm not gonna be disadvantaged.
You, you're gonna have a disadvantage, Steve, because you've never worked in a classroom. You've never volunteered at a school. Have you visited any of the Cincinnati public schools?
I have visited Cincinnati.
But you, you've never done it, you've never done anything. You've had, you, you, to me, that sounds like, you know, you know, here's what we get a lot of. We get people that want to run for office and all of a sudden they care about black folks, they care about these issues. But there's a lot of ways to be involved before you run in office. There's a lot of ways to be involved.
That's fair.
And I think it's fair to ask, to try to get to whether you're authentic or not, to ask you, what have you done prior to actually stepping up on the stage and saying you want us to support you? So you said you heard, you hear gunshots down the street. What have you done about it? You said you hear, you got kids down the street. What have you done? Other than now you're running for school board and you want us, you want, you're trying to get our vote and you're saying the right things. Like I said, I'm not saying vocational training, nobody disagrees with that. But we need good people to have the right mind. What we don't need is a bull in the china shop. You kind of come across like a bull in the china shop to me. A little bit. A lot of bit. Like, we and I talk, you use the word disruptor. I love the word disruptor. If at the end of the day, we're actually getting somewhere for our children and removing it forward. You know what I'm saying? So that's what I'm trying to get and ask you this question, Steve. Like, when I hear you in these interviews, you got all the answers. You got all the answers, but I'm trying to get it, you as a man. Because at the end of the day, it's gonna be you as a man that's sitting on that school board making decisions. Tell me I'm wrong. So that's why these questions, that's why these questions are designed this way, because I'm trying to get a sense of who you are before you said that you want to be on the school board. And so far, you did the politics thing. You have had no real involvement with Cincinnati Public Schools whatsoever. You talk about the issues that black folks meet, but you had no real contact with any black organizations or the community whatsoever. And these, these are the kind of things that gotta be put out there, Steve.
So, so Nathan, so Nathan, number one, my wife and I have not been blessed with children yet. And I'm gonna let that sit in for a second. So, no, I have not had an opportunity to really be engaged with the Cincinnati Public School System as a parent. And so I am very passionate about making sure that people have a chance to succeed. I have walked into courtrooms and defended people my entire professional life. I have defended causes my entire professional life. And, yeah, I, I am a disruptor at times because when you have the Board of Education saying that they're the number one urban school district in Ohio, and that's true, but it also means you're number five seventy-one out of six oh eight on the state report card, Nathan. You know, that is window washing a problem and it's passing the buck. We need people on the school board that are going to actually be maybe a bull in the china shop and, and at least talk up the fact that we have problems and we have failing schools. And we're not getting that. And neither of my opponents are really talking about that, Nathan. And neither of my opponents have a plan. So, um, we, you know, that's fine. You, you, you know, this is, this country is a blessed place. And we can agree to disagree, and you may not think that I have the experience, but in, in some situations, experience can be more of a hindrance to getting things done. You know, when people have hired me to be a lawyer, I'm sorry?
Give me an example.
Of what?
What you just said, Steve. You said in some cases, experience can be a hindrance. What do you mean by that?
I don't think, you know, I don't necessarily think that a member of the Board of Education who's appointed by the Board of Education is gonna have an open mind and want to make change. There's an example.
You might be right on that.
Or I don't think, I, I don't think that somebody who has been a teacher for twenty-five years and was a Democrat and then switched to become a Republican so they can run for the school board. You know, I think that's a little disingenuous, Nathan. And I don't think that, you know, I, I don't think that that is fair either.
Who are you talking about?
I don't think that, one of my other opponents.
You don't want to say no names?
Uh, you can look it up. I mean, people know who I'm running against. I mean, I'm running against Pam Bowers, who was voted for the school board, and I voted for the Republican endorsed candidate, Gary Fabers.
Okay, there it is. But the name's out there. So we know. I mean, not everybody might be aware. And I will talk, hopefully talk with all those individuals.
I'm consistent. You know, I'm consistent. I'm consistent, Nathan. I, 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 I'm, I can, I, one thing is I am consistent.
What do you think about, what do you think about if you were on the school board? Would you have voted for the FC Cincinnati deal?
Yes, I, I said that at the debate. Yes, I would have.
Why?
Because I think that it was a generationally, uh, important project. It was a two hundred and fifty million dollar uh, investment in the West End, and I was proud of my work with Councilmember Jeff Pastor to put in place the first and only, uh, Community Benefits Agreement, which, uh, invested money for the Taff Senators. It funded a housing study that has shown that there will be gentrification in the West End. It provided uh, requirements for hiring at the stadium, much like Casino Project. So, uh, African Americans and other minorities would have a first shot at employment. Opportunities across the board, uh, with the team. Uh, it included da, uh, funding for displacement of businesses like Just Cooking and money for, um, displacement of residents. Uh, you know, yeah, I would, I mean, it, it, they got a brand new Stargel Stadium out, out of the, and they got more than they normally would have gotten if it had been a normal tax-abated project. So yes, I would have voted for it. And I, and as I said at the debate, I applaud the school board for their zeal in, uh, negotiating that once in a lifetime, once in a generation project. And I would have voted for the FC Cincinnati Stadium deal. Yes, if a member of the school board, yes.
Uh, speaking with Steve Meegerly, he's running for Cincinnati, Cincinnati School Board, and that election's coming up in November. So coming up very, very shortly. Well, Steve, listen, man, I, I, I did want to spend some time talking about your qualifications, believe me. Everybody who I talk to, I'm gonna ask them the same question about, do you have educational background? That ain't no question just specific to you. That's a question I ask anybody. Cause I've seen it, I've done it, and I know that it brings you a valuable insight and experience if you're trying to make larger decisions about it. So I want you to understand that. But because I asked you that, I also want to ask you, what is it about your background unique to you that you think would work as a member of the school board?
I'm a fighter. I'm a fighter. I'm not, I'm, I'm, I'm a fighter and I'm gonna fight for kids. I'm gonna fight for people so that every kid has the same opportunities that we all did. Or some of us did, you know. I, I'm gonna fight for the children in CPS so that every child has a chance to succeed, period. On day one, that's what I'm gonna start fighting for, so that people can rise out of the middle class, so that we can, so that we can, so that in, in twenty twenty-eight, let me just give you an example. In twenty twenty-eight, here's my goal. I want Cincinnati Public Schools to be the best urban school district in the United States of America. And I want an eighty-five plus percent graduation rate, if not ninety percent. I want twenty-five, I want twenty-five to forty-five percent, if not more, of kids enrolled in vocational and technical education who aren't going to college. I want a minimum, I, I want zero failing schools in our Cincinnati Public Schools on the state report card. Those are lofty goals, and I'm willing to, you know, get to work and roll up my sleeves and fight every day for our kids. Because I'm a fighter and I, you know, I, I believe that, I, I just believe that we need to do better.
Yeah, I agree with that. And I'll tell you one thing is that I, I, I got from the incumbents when I was over the NAACP forum is, um, you know, I, I'm sure there's a lot of bright spots. And we need to build upon our bright spots. But we got a lot, a lot of not so good, not so bright spots with CPS, a whole lot of them. And the big question is, how do we have, how do we recreate that magic that we see in a few schools like Walnut Hills? And then bring that to, to the other schools. Now, one of the incumbents, uh, said that the biggest thing about that is the parents. You know, the type of parents, for whatever, I don't know what, what that means, but it's, it's the parent involvement.
They, they, you know.
How do you, how do you from a school board, I mean, what do you do as a school board to change that? Because to me, it seems like, Steve, that we've, we've accepted a separate but unequal educational system for a long time here in CPS. Let's be real. And, and as long as the children of the privilege were getting to the schools that they wanted, everything else was okay. That's what it seemed like to me, just to be blunt.
I, I completely agree with you a hundred percent on that, Nathan, is education is the civil rights issue of the twenty-first century. Period. And when you have Frederick Douglass, that's a D, you have Hughes, that's a D, you have Parker Woods, that's a D. You have Roehlhill, that's a D, you have Rothenberg, that's an S, Taff's an S, Pleasant Hill's a D, you know, uh, West Hill, a high is an S, Taff's a D, I'm just going through the state report card. Yeah, it's, we have inequity. You know, it, it, across the district. And, you know, the school board wants to blame everyone but themselves for the failure. Let's blame the parents because, you know, they live in poverty. Let's blame the bus providers because the kids aren't getting to school on time. You know, it's a lot of pointing fingers and it, and being a leader means taking responsibility, seeing a problem and solving it. And that's one of the things that I will bring to the school board. Now, you know, we have a high African American population in our schools. Why do we not hire more African American school teachers? I, you know, I think that my, one of my opponents should continue being a great African American special education teacher because we have so few of them, especially in the special ed realm. You know, I think that one of the ways that we solve this problem is we, we roll up our sleeves and we create programs at a policy level from the board to the superintendent where we recruit African American school teachers. Other states and other urban school districts across the country have done this, and it's been successful, and their test scores have gone up. So w- w- we, we just need to, we need to get in and do the work. And I just, I, I don't think that we have, I don't think that either of my opponents are going to work as hard as I am once they're, once, i- if they're elected to the school board, period. I just don't. I'm sorry.
All right, Steve. Uh, let me run through this as well, man. What do you think? Hold on here. Um, I'm trying to glean for questions from the audience here. Hold on one second.
That's fine.
Um, somebody wants to know, has the school board not been predominantly Democrat asking for a friend? I'm not sure if that she just put it out there, but that's a question for you.
There hasn't been a Republican on the school board since the nineteen nineties. Period.
Somebody wants to know, what are your thoughts on go back to your country Cincinnati soccer team targeted racism? That's a current story that just happened.
I don't know. I, I don't know anything. I, I don't know anything about that, so I can't comment.
Okay, something happened over in Western Hills. Okay, so you can't comment on that. Again, if you have questions, uh, please feel free, uh, to drop them in. Five one three eight seven three seven one three four. We can use that number once our guess is, is off the line, Steve. Well, Steve, listen, I, I'd like to get your thoughts on, uh, the way. What do you think about the tax abatement situation with the Cincinnati School Board and local business community? Do you think that harms or helps our children?
I think it's gonna hurt the children in the long run. CPS has taken a, drawn a very divisive, rigid stance uh, with, with this agreement. Just a little background, this is a twenty-year agreement that was, um, put into place when they built the Bengals and the Red Stadium downtown. And part of that agreement was that if the school board supported, uh, the bill, the, the sales tax that uh, the, the school board or the school district would get certain things. And one of those things is five million dollars a year from the City of Cincinnati's general fund that they've gotten. The CPS has gotten almost a hun, will, after this year, will have gotten a hundred million dollars. And part of another agreement with the county is that, is Hamilton County cuts a check to CPS each year for ten million dollars a year. So that's fifteen million dollars. That's twenty, the current levy that's up for renewal, that's twenty-five percent of that levy that, that the five million of it expires at the end of the year, the CPS gets. I mean, that pays for a lot of the things in, in, in our schools. So, um, one, I, I think that the school board, uh, just, it doesn't understand its role in economic development. If you are not, if you are not going to be open to taking a discount, and that's what an abatement is, it's a discount on taxes for a period of time, you're gonna see development grind to a halt in the city. When you have a systematic system where if you're a developer coming into the city and you know that, um, you're gonna receive a discount on your taxes that's set in stone based on a written agreement uh, with the school board, you're more likely to want to build, uh, build in a commercial or residential development in the city where we increase tax dollars and we increase jobs and we, we increase opportunities. So I, you know, I, I disagree with the position of the school board as a whole. Um, I, I don't think it's fair that, you know, they want to make, they want full reimbursement for past agreements that have already been set. They want to recalculate the millage, uh, the reimbursement rate annually. They want to reduce the term of the year to, the, the current agreement to twenty years when they just expanded the levy from five to ten. I think that's a little interesting. And they don't want any extension of prior agreements without their approval. Um, you know, it, this agree, I'll be honest, from what I'm hearing, this agreement is going to expire. And let's see six months from now or a year from now, if we have a lot of new developments that are gonna hire, they're gonna hire people to do construction and trades in the city. I think that, that there is a storm looming that, um, if CPS continues to hold this hard line, that, that they want their full reimbursement and they're not willing to take a discount. And let me just give you a, I'll, I'll give you a brief example. Say, say you have a vacant lot, okay? You have a vacant lot and the vacant lot pays a minimal amount of property taxes to CPS. And, and let's not forget that CPS is about seventy percent of your property tax bill. I mean, that's a huge chunk. So you have a vacant lot that is under, that's not underdeveloped, okay? And a developer comes in and they want to build a ten million dollar project, okay? So they're gonna discount it and it's gonna be twenty-five percent of the ten million dollars. That's gonna be the taxable property that they're gonna pay through a payment and lower taxes. So you either have, and it ta, and, and then the, you know, ten year, it's a ten-year agreement. So for the ten years, you're gonna get twenty-five percent of that ten million dollars. And then after the ten years, you're gonna get the full value of the ten million dollar property tax value of that project. Or you can have a vacant lot that's generating a lot less than the twenty-five percent of the, uh, the twenty-five percent of the discount for building a brand-new building that's gonna create jobs and it's gonna employ people in the building and trades to build. That's why I disagree with their position. And I, and I hope that that example show, i- i- I, I hope that that example shows why we need to renew um, or have some sort of an agreement. Do I think the agreement with the city's perfect? No. Um.
Steve, you still there?
I mean, do I, yeah, I'm sure. Do I think that the agreement's perfect with CPS? No. Do I think that we need to sit down and negotiate with the, the school board in the city? Absolutely. And, you know, these, again, these are two groups of Democrats that, that can't come to an agreement on something. You know, that, that's nuts. So.
Here's a question from the audience, Steve. Uh, someone wants to know if you were fired from Councilman's Pastor's office or did you quit and why?
I, I was hired to work for Councilmember Pastor, uh, to help get his office up and running because he was, just like me, a person who was elected to public office with, um, not very much public service experience. And, you know, I worked there, um, and it was a great opportunity. And no, I was not fired. Period. I was not fired. I left. Because, uh, my role was to get his office up and running, and it got to a point where he was, he was, he had gotten the ropes of being a city council member, and there were other opportunities for me in the back in the private sector. And it was an amicable, uh, split. I mean, I, I talked to Councilmember Pastor, uh, last week, actually. So.
Okay. Um, well, Steve, listen, uh, I appreciate your time. I'm trying to make sure the audience gets as many questions as, here's another question. Um, what's the, ask him what his understanding of how the administration works is. What's the org chart? Has he ever been to a school board meeting? From the audience.
So the Board of Education hires two, three employees. They hire the superintendent, they hire the treasurer, and they hire their lawyer. All the other aspects of the Board of Education are ran by the superintendent. The Board of Education is a policymaking body that sets policy, uh, that sets policy for the school district.
Have you ever been to a school board meeting?
I watch them online. They're, they're, I watch them online. I watch them online. They're they're, I watch them online.
Oh, you watch them online, okay. But you never actually went to a school board meeting? Come on, Steve. Come on, man, these is easy things. Come on, listen, go to a school board meeting. So actually be there.
What what's, what what's the difference? I mean, what's the difference between watching them in the in the comfort of my home? Like, people watched the Democratic debate last night. I mean.
Uh, there's a lot of difference because you're running for the board itself. So I would think that you wanna have some firsthand personal experience. I mean, come on, we both grown, being in person is a lot different than watching anything on TV. It also shows a level of, you know, just how serious you are about it as well. I mean, that's that's how I look at it. Yeah, I mean, because. No, go ahead.
To answer the question, I've watched, to answer the que- answer the question, you know, I I watch the school board meetings on my computer, okay? So.
All right. Let me see, uh, I'm trying to get, I'm get this, this is directly from the audience here.
That's fine.
Somebody writes, um, ask him why did he think it was okay to wear the MAGA hat while he was working for pastor?
I don't know. I don't know what they're referring to.
Uh, the Make America Great Again hat? Did you ever wear a MAGA hat when you was working for pastor?
Not, not, not that I can recall, not that I remember. I mean, I I that I don't, I'm not that I remember.
I seem to recall the image of you wearing a MAGA hat, something with pastor. It might have been the night that he was elected, I think, because I was at that party, uh, downtown. I I thought.
No, that was no, no, that was no, that's my red hat that my that my mother in law gave me for Christmas. That has a a Republican elephant on it. No, that's the hat I wore to pass. That's the hat.
All right, all right, I'm just I'm just asking.
And and and, you know, and I think that's an allusion to whether or not, you know, I support President Trump. So, I mean.
Well, do you support President Trump?
Uh, I support the fact that we have, uh, the lowest unemployment rate in the African American community and the Hispanic community. And I I like what the president is do- Yeah, I I appreciate that. I I like what the president's doing with his judicial nominations that we're actually going to have judges that respect the Fourth Amendment, the Fifth Amendment, and the Sixth Amendment to the Constitution, which affects, uh, disproportionately African Americans when they walk into a criminal court setting. Absolutely. I support the president on those things. You know, are there other things that I don't support the president on? Yeah, absolutely. I think the president should stay off Twitter, period. End of story.
Well, that's the easy one. We all know that. What do you think about Betsy DeVos, the Education Secretary? You think she's doing a good job?
Um, I I agree with some of what she says and I I I disagree with one with some of what she says. And, you know, look, when you have a failing public school system and your neighborhood schools and your neighborhood schools failing and you don't have a magnet school, uh, I believe that the parent is in the best position to choose what school's best for their child. And if that may be a, uh, u- utilizing a voucher or, uh, if CPS would ever get its act together and get, uh, get its accreditation back to do charter schools, uh, I I think that those are opportunities for, uh, success. So, I mean, CPS law, a lot of peo- a a lot of people don't, a lot of people don't know this, Nathan, but CPS law had three charter schools at one point in time and th- they were so dysfunctionally and poorly ran that the bipartisan Board of Educat- a state Board of Education by a fifteen oh vote yanked their accreditation. But charter schools, if ran by the district, and I'm not talking about these fly by night, online, online charter schools and things like that, or these private charter schools, um, that just steal money and they pay teachers nil and it's just terrible. Um, you know, I think that we need CPS charter schools back because those are great opportunities for public-private partnerships where the business community could get involved and the taxpayers wouldn't have to pay, have to have the burden of paying for, uh, some of these programs.
You know, one thing that I'll say is that, you know, as I've observed you, you seem to have a handle on certain facts and figures, stats, things like that that either CPS doesn't wanna talk about or people just haven't researched. Uh, in the time we have left, is there anything you wanna share that you've come across that may either be, you know, uh, you know, just educational and or you think the public doesn't really know about how CPS operates?
So I was out walking door to door over the weekend and, uh, a little girl told me that, uh, she was really, I talked to her grandma and then I, she wanted, she ran out as I was walking down the street. She wanted to, she wanted me to lobby for longer lunchtimes for the kids at Dater Montessori because they they don't get enough time for lunch and, uh, versus recess. So that's, that's definitely something that I've learned that I guess a lot of people in the district may not know. Um, but, um, you know, we have situations at schools where we have Montessori curriculum that's from the nineteen nineties. Like, I think we were back in high school then, Nathan. Think how much the world's changed since we were in high school. And so they're using the same Montessori curriculum from the nineteen nineties. There's a social studies and science curriculum that is, uh, inter- computer based. And, you know, there there's not enough laptops in the classrooms for all the children to follow along. So they're having to have have to print out all the documents and get an override from downtown because, uh, the Board of Education has a po- a no paper, a paperless policy. And so, um, and so, you know, it's just eh, things like that. You know, it's it's disconcerting when, you know, your curriculum is being taught on a computer and you only have a computer in the cla- laptop for one and three kids and they have to shuffle around the laptops. Uh, those are, those are problems that are on the ground, uh, I think that a lot of people aren't talking about, uh, with the schools.
Well, Steve, thank you for your time. Uh, I really appreciate it.
Oh, this was great.
Yeah, for sure, man.
I didn't, I I didn't, I didn't expect to be on here for almost an hour, you know? I I expect that you and I would have, you know, one of us would have gotten mad at each other maybe and then hung up or something. But I'm glad that this was a great interview. I I, this was fun. I, you know, these are tough questions. And, you know, we we may agree to disagree on a lot of, on some things. But, you know, when it comes to our schools, uh, it's a lot more important than what happens at City Hall. And, you know, I it, I I tell people all the time, if you're happy with our Cincinnati Public Schools and you think things are great at CPS, you have, I I have two opponents and and pass the road for them. If you want someone who is going to shake things up and call for transformational change and be a leader and call balls and strikes and who wanna, who's who are, someone who's gonna stand up for our kids and stand up for the parents and stand up for the taxpayers, I would appreciate their vote on November fifth. Uh, I appreciate prayers. Go to give, if you wanna learn more, go to giveourkidsachance.com. We're getting ready to drop a, uh, a a radio ad today, uh, on to talk about some things that I think that are very important for our Cincinnati Public Schools. And Nathan, this was great. I appreciate the opportunity and look forward to being on when I'm a member of the Board of Education.
All right, take it easy, Steve. Appreciate your time. Yep, appreciate that. So, uh, he is running for Cincinnati School Board. You have an opportunity to vote for him. Um, I'm getting a message. Somebody just sent me a message. How'd it go last night? I I would say it went well. Uh, it, I didn't, I I didn't, um, reach my goal. But I would say overall, everything was good and I'll respond as soon as I get off the air. So that was Steve Meagley. What do you think? What is your opinion of him? What's your gut opinion of him? I can read through some of the comments, people, you know, you can't ever make nobody happy with the question, so I don't try. I just want you to know, my approach to it is not to try to make the audience happy. I'm trying to give us information. And somebody was like, well, we gotta ask the se- similar questions to everybody. Yeah, true, there'll be similar questions across the board because it's, there's similar context. But these are all individual men and women that have individual backgrounds, individual experiences. There's a uniqueness to every last one of them. So every question ain't gonna be the same. How how do, how do I get a sense of who he is by asking the same questions? I'm gonna ask somebody else who has a completely different background. No, I wanna get a sense of the human. Damn what you telling me? What have you done? Okay, so that's what I'm trying to get to the bottom of. You know, people running for office, I'm not saying Steve in particular, but I'm saying we all bellyache about this. Politicians, all of a sudden, they love us when it's election time. Well, I wanna get to the bottom of it. Where have you been? What have you been doing in the community? What organizations have you worked for? What organizations have you championed? Have you volunteered? When we talk about CPS, that matters because it's too easy to become a volunteer. All you gotta do is do it. That's it. And then put the time in. It says something about where your head is at. That's just me. Now, some of the audience might feel differently and I respect it, but this is how I'm gonna do what I do. Okay, so I I have a plan for every interview and, uh, I have a plan, just like I had a plan for this interview. And, you know, these questions are designed to elicit answers for multiple reasons, some that may be obvious and some that may become more obvious as the interview goes on and on and on. But like I told him, damn all that issue ish, all this is an issue. I wanna know what happened. What did you do? Why'd you have to get your record expunged? Why are you in the newspaper? All these are very valid questions. We got LGBTQ, uh, students. Are you hostile to that? I wanna know. Who are these black kids in the photograph? Who are them? I look at the photograph, it looks like book, it, me. It looks like, you know, using black kids for props. I said that. So that's how I honestly felt about it. You know, this ain't about, I ain't trying to get nobody. This is the the nature of the interview and it'll be that way. If I talk to someone else in the school board and they've got a similar background, I'm gonna ask them similar questions. But if you got somebody that has an educational background, now my questions become different. I don't have to ask you whether you worked in the school or not because I know you did. And that's what I'm trying to do. Each and every one of these candidates are unique. So we're gonna have some similar questions, but for me, there's gonna be some things that I'm gonna add specific to them that's just specific to them. And that's the way it needs to be because when they get on these positions, when they become politicians, they get on the school board, we're gonna be dealing with them as an individual. That's the first thing they'll tell you. They gonna tell you, I'm making this decision based upon how I feel about it. Well, I wanna get a sense of who you are before you do it. Real simple. You know, you talking about how you hear gunshots? What'd you do about it? You got little black kids, it's need help. What are you doing about it? You know, these are all fair questions, at least in my head. And I hope that it allows you to get some insight. So as we move forward, you may hear, you definitely gonna hear some similar questions. Uh, and you may hear some unique questions that I've developed that are based just upon that individual and some of the things that I wanna ask about them that's kinda sticking out. And for Steve, my number one question for him is, what's your educational background? I'm gonna ask that. That's the question you gonna hear from everybody. What's your educational background? You got a background in education? What do you, Girl Scout leader, Boy Scout leader, troop leader? You worked in the before program, after school program? What? You know, at your job, uh, they did sort of a volunteer program with a certain school, so you decided to dedicate your lunchtime? See, you speak to dedication. How you spend your time says a lot about you. You know, uh, I asked Steve, had he ever gone to a school board meeting? He said he watched it on City Cable. Okay, uh, for me, if I was running for school board, I'm going to a school board meeting. I want to physically be there. I wanna hear it. I wanna see it. I wanna read the nonverbals. It's important to me. Again, I'm not trying to say anything negative about that, man. You make your own decisions. I'm just talking generally about my feelings about some of the questions and why I asked them. I wanna know. I wanna know who you are before you're trying to tell us who you are. What have you done? What you done? What? And what you done is a great indicator of what you may do in the future. Everybody knows that. We all grown folks. And, uh, that was because of the nature of it. It wasn't because he's a Republican. I don't give a damn about that. So what? I don't care if nobody's a Republican or not. I asked him about Trump and, you know, I understand that's a very polarizing, but it is what it is. You know what I'm saying? You know, it is what it is. I could easily ask a question about Hillary and people say, oh, no, you were Hillary. I mean, so that's just what it is. We all have to deal with the consequences of the affiliations that we make, period. Not shedding no tears. And I don't want this interview to be like every other interview here. Because if that's the case, then why are we doing it? It's a waste of damn time. So that's Steve and I'll let you know, uh, when we get our next school board candidate. And, uh, again, it'll probably be at eight thirty AM. I'm trying to be consistent with that for you. And then we can break it down as to what's going on. We can break it down. Let me go way, I'm going way, way, way back, way back. But again, uh, what's your take? I see Tiffany was giving me the business. She said I was biased and if there's people that I like, I go easy on them. Well, is that true? Well, I mean, you have to make that decision. You know, you have to make that decision. Uh, I try to ask the questions that I think need to be asked. And, um, a friend or I don't have any foes. I'm not against Steve. I don't have any issues with Steve or anything like that. I mean, what he did, he didn't do it to me with the flyer. So I don't have any problem with him personally at all. This ain't personal. It's questions. It's media. And like I said, y- y- you can't make people happy. I don't try to make the general populace happy, you know? And it is what it is. I've done interviews and people hit me up after like, uh, hmm, that didn't go so well. And it's it's the nature of it. You know what I'm saying? So I don't try to make everybody happy. I try to make me happy and give you information. That's what I'm trying to do. I can't make, if I'm running here trying to make everybody happy, man, it drive me nuts. And run around like a chicken with my head cut off trying to make everybody happy. I ain't trying, I'm not even gonna attempt it. I'm telling you that. I'm making me happy and give you information. That's what I'm trying to do. And so if it was a deviation from some of the questions that you might briefly hear, hopefully it gave you some instruct- some information about a very critical, 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 uh, decision. And I'll say it again, if you're a school board member, I'm not saying that you necessarily have to have educational background, but it says something about you and it goes a long way. Because when you get on a school board and you don't have no educational background, you gonna spend the first year or two doing what? Catching up. I'm gonna visit all the schools as if that means something. I'm gonna visit all the schools because you don't even been in the schools. So now you gotta visit the schools and introduce yourself, get a sense of what's going on. That's what's gonna happen. Um, if you're elected to school board and you don't have any educational background. I mean, they got, they even got like a little academy, uh, that that somebody got some funding for and they put together a preparation for school board, uh, school. Now, I don't know what the nature of it is. I'm gonna find out. Uh, but there's a lot of resources out there if you wanna get information about what's going on with the school board. So I'll leave it like that and we'll just move on. Five one three eight seven three seven one three four. It is a beautiful Wednesday. Tracy asked me, she said, well, Nate, when you run for office, what you gonna do when when you go on the radio and people giving you tough questions? I'm gonna answer them. That's what I'm gonna do. I ain't gonna waiver, ain't gonna be no yabba dabba doo. It's gonna be with a strong affirmative voice. I'm gonna answer it, period. Simple as that. I don't, that's the least of my worries. I'm not worried about that at all. That's gonna be fun, quite honestly. It's gonna be a lot of fun. Uh, but give me your thoughts. Enough of me, more of you. Uh, what did you think? Uh, did Mr. Steve Meagley, did he earn your vote? Um, he says, uh, well, he said a lot of things. I'll let you marinate on it and give me your thoughts. Let's go straight to the phones. Good morning, welcome to the show. Hello?
Can you hear me, Nathan?
I I can't hear you. What's up, man? This Kev on the cell?
Yeah, it's Kev on the cell.
Hey, good morning, Kev.
Good morning, sir. Um, so I like Steve. I met Steve, um, at a few events throughout the the community. And I actually was like kinda on his team, but today he he said something that threw me. Uh, so I have a concern that a person who doesn't recognize that the, the, you know, the, um, the, the level of the unemployment rate and all of those things predicated the current president and ascribes those, that opportunity to him, that that kind, that throws me. That that kinda throws me off, you know what I mean? Because there was already a low unemployment rate when the president took office. And he really hasn't enacted any, any at all, uh, legislation that would change that. Done a little bit to, in fact, send it the other way, but really hasn't done anything that I know of. Now, I could be wrong. Maybe somebody can, you know, give me a little bit of insight that I'm not aware of. But I just don't recall where the president's made any like huge decisions that have changed how the country is employed. So that throws me. That 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 actually throws me off. Because let's be honest, we talk about schools, he only got two things. One is the historical perspective of the school, right? So if you, if you see history is kinda twisted or or if you're confused about history, you know, that 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 is a concern. But I do like, I will say I do like, the one thing I, two things I like about Steve. One is the whole, I took it back grassroots and I go door to door. Uh, cause he's been doing that now for, I met him about two months ago. He's been going door, door to door pretty much from what I know since before I met him. And like I said, that was two months ago. So I do like that. And two, he seems to be a whistleblower, man. I don't, I do like the idea that he's gonna go down there and he's gonna, he's gonna tell folks business. So, um, those are the pluses. But on the minus, you know, you giving credit to folks for stuff they didn't do, man? I don't know. What do you think?
Well, I mean, my concerns run much deeper than that, much deeper than that, quite honestly. And I do remember that 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 point in our conversation and the thought did go to my head to go down that way. But because it was non-school board related, I decided not to challenge him on that. But you're right, that was some old, you know, we we all know the history of what really happened here and I'm glad you picked it up on it. Yeah, there was no need for me to really go through it. You know, smart people can hear it for themselves and make their own decision.
Yeah, that's true. I last thing I wanna say, um, you know, you know how my- Yeah, that's real. Last thing I wanna say, um, you know, you know how, and so we're past the point where you could have registered for this election. Now, don't, you know, if you're sitting around right now saying to yourself, man, I should have made sure I was able to register for this vote. Okay, you get a reprieve because the important one is gonna be coming up next. Well, I don't say that. They all important. But the, 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 the next one is really important. If you're not registered, get registered. There are, now that you can actually go online, as, as, uh, as Steve just said, you could do it from the comfort of your own home on your laptop if you happen to have one. If you don't, there's the public library. If you don't wanna do that, you could go into any one of the offices that are around the, the, um, the DNC offices over in, uh, Pleasant Ridge. Um, it's a, it's right across from and almost behind, uh, I guess that's a BP up there on the corner. I'm giving a, a landmark just so that you can say, well, I don't address love, or you'll know where you are in the general location. Um, and then, uh, the, uh, the board of elections is down in Norwood. You know, you can sign up at your, at the, at the driver's bureau, uh, get registered. Uh, don't miss the next vote. It's gonna be really impactful. Um, it's really gonna set the stage for if we got four more years of this, this, this guy who, uh, you know, I just, I, I, I always say the same thing. I have nothing against, um, Mr., uh, pre- president, I gotta say president, Trump as a person, because I don't know him. Only thing I know is that I don't feel safer in the country and I've got a, a little girl who I wanna make sure gets an opportunity to grow up. So, you know, get registered, get involved, uh, and get out there and let's kinda change the landscape from what it is currently.
Appreciate the, oh, go ahead.
Uh, hey, drop, man, no nonsense. We, we tired of the nonsense, man. No one is falling for the oaky goat, man. We're not gonna fall for the banana in the tailpipe. Just cut it out. I don't bless my mate. Mate in on every station across the nation. Shout out to my man T-Bone. All blessings, sir.
Uh, thank you. Peace and blessings to you, brother. Also, uh, RIP to almighty T-Bone. Oh, man. He said that, uh, the one thing that stuck out to him is when he didn't get Obama credit. Hmm, it's interesting. For me, I had a whole bunch of other issues, concerns, or put it that way, concerns. But, you know, I put all the questions out there. I didn't save anything. And again, this, that wasn't your typical interview. I mean, I'm asking about Facebook photographs and things like that, but to me, it's all media. If it, you post something, everything is open for a conversation or interpretation. I stand by what I say. When I look at that photograph, hmm, I don't like it. Something about it that just don't sit well with me. Um, so that's why I put the question out there. And I, I think it was a very real question that got to the heart of authenticity. You know, do you have an authentic relationship with our community? Or is it a convenient relationship now that you trying to run for office? Again, people always say that's an issue. That's why I ask these questions, trying to get to the heart of who you are as a man. Cause they all gonna say the right things when it comes to the school board. I mean, come on, the election's right across, uh, two weeks from now. They gonna say the right things. They know what to say. I wanna get deeper than that. I wanna pierce that a little bit. And I could've got much deeper, but for the sake of the audience, uh, I left it for what it was. Uh, somebody writes, they thought that Steve was getting irritated. He might've been, just because he, you know, I've seen him in other interviews and scenarios. He didn't really like those questions. Those questions are fair. Oh, hold on. Yes, it is. It's fair to talk about what happened. Campaign finance, it's fair. It's fair to ask about pastor and all those questions are all fair. Cause you wanna represent our babies. My daughter's at CPS. This ain't no game to me. Your kids are at CPS. This is not a game to you. You take this, you might have a child that one may, one day may be at CPS. You don't think this is a game, do you? Cause I don't. So I'm sure I get the gotchas and he's biased or whatever and, hey, it is what it is. Call me what you want, but I'm gonna give it to you real and raw here on the Nathan Ivy Show. That's what's gonna happen. Um, Bunky writes, Nate, get this fraud off the line. See, there you go. TNT writes, what about name? Let's see. Uh, man. Um. Uh, that was quite interesting. Those African American kids over there, right? Oh, man. Ray writes, remember man and the black children? Yeah, I was the only one talking about it. David Mann's little reelection campaign, he's got the little, the little black kids walking around with the, with the white hair on. Like recreating his hairstyle, his, what the fuck does that mean? What does that mean exactly? I still don't know what that meant. David Amadeus Mann. Amadeus, Amadeus. Oh, 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 Amadeus, 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 Amadeus. I mean, come on now. Stop using black kids as props. You ain't gonna do that with my children. You already knew. Don't even ask me. My wife and I were talking about it. She was like, well, maybe this and maybe that, you know, she's trying to play the other side of it. I'm like, we ain't never did that. Yeah, you see me out there with my kids for a candidate and my kids got a candidate's t-shirt on? My children? Uh, you better believe it's somebody I support. You better believe that 100%. I'm not here to be your prop. We got too many black props here in the Cincinnati area. I don't wanna be a prop. Okay? Y'all funny. Tony writes, black kids cut by grass. Y'all being mean and vicious now. Y'all being mean and vicious and hilarious at the same time and poignant at the same time. Oh, my gosh. Steve, if you listening, man, you gotta listen back to that interview. If I was working with you, I would recommend some different responses. That's just me. I'm gonna be back up here. Don't bring up David Mann again. I'll never forget this guy, man. Like what in the hell? Who are these children? Why are they in David Mann's reelection campaign commercial? Oh, man. CGW writes, Steve, will you walk in the LG, LGB, LGBTQ parade? I missed that CGW. Uh, see, Sister V is now, she writes, when I ran for school board in 2013, the stats he named were the exact same. Can he share with us what his plan is to change those statistics? I think maybe we got to that a little bit. Not directly, but I think we got to it. Tony writes, hey, I'm participating in a Black family reunion. Can I borrow your black kids, please? See, you, you look at that photograph and tell me what you think of. And I'm telling you, if you don't see what I see, then you're, I, I, I don't know what to say. I don't know what to say. Interesting. I don't wanna go harp on it. We can go back and check out the podcast and share it. Uh, I wanna move on to other matters, but first let's take a phone call. Hey, good morning and welcome to the show. Hey, what's up, man? You sound a bit muffled.
I'm, oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, there you go.
Is that better?
Yeah, 100, 100%.
Yes, sir. Um, uh, I was gonna be very frank and blunt here. I, I thought that was a very disciplined effort by you. Going at that man like that. You, 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 you're animus towards him was visceral. And it came across, you know, like, you know, I mean, he even recognized it and threw a shot at you at the end. You know, like, yeah, you know, I, I've been on here for an hour, you know, I, I, you know, I, I thought by now one of us would get mad and hang up, but no, this was cool. You know, basically saying like, and what negro? What? You know, he walked into an ambush and I think as time goes on, he's gonna look, he gonna come out, uh, this looking pretty good. Cause he walked into an ambush, take your best shot and smiled on the way out. You know what I'm saying? I mean, you didn't have that energy for Tracy Hunter.
Is that what you heard?
Yeah, that's what I heard, B. I'm, I'm being, I'm being an objective listener.
I mean, well, I mean, I, listen, I, I respect your opinion. I can't tell you that what you think is wrong. Um, and I'm sure everybody may have their own interpretation. Some may agree, some may disagree. Uh, I would say that I have no animus toward the man whatsoever. Um, and that's it, man. I mean, you entitled to your opinion. I think you wrong. I think you off. You've been off for about two months now. So this ain't too, too off, you know, this ain't too out of the ordinary. Um, in terms of an ambush, no, Steve has been listening to the show. He been listening to the show since we connected over the weekend. How do I know? He told me. Uh, so he's been listening to the show to get a sense of what it is and who I am and my style.
I'm just telling you. Supposed to know you after three shows?
No, I'm just telling you. I mean, you said ambush.
Just like he's supposed to know the energy of the Cincinnati, uh, public school from online watching.
No, he's supposed to know the energy of the show and what he's getting by listening to the show.
But he's been listening for three days.
I'm just telling you.
He don't know that you, that you wishy-washy, you flip flop sometimes.
Stop projecting.
You know, you have callers that you hate, but that you agree with. And when you agree with them, you try to laugh it off. I can't believe I'm agreeing with him. I can't believe this. Oh, my God.
I mean, really, is this your best shot? That's the real question. That's the, if this is your best shot, bro, you need to go back and reload again.
I'm not taking shots. I'm just reflecting on what I heard.
Okay, I mean, you entitled to it.
You know, I'm just saying like, ah, come on, man. Well, yeah, what, what school board candidate gets an hour on a podcast that's two hours? You just trying to, you just trying to drag dude.
Was I?
I'm just saying what I heard, okay? You say you weren't.
I think you're trying hard, I think you're trying hard to be a contrarian. That's what I think. You swinging and missing.
I'm not. I don't do that. That ain't my game.
But that's fine, though. I have no problem. We're gonna go right ahead.
That ain't my game, B. I'm just saying.
It's exactly your game, B.
He tried to make you look like a negro. You know, if he was black, he would've been a negro after that interview.
Well, I would say that.
Very apologetic, very apologetic after, ingracious after getting, you know, beat on.
Say, say, wouldn't, say that again one time, because you just lost me on that. Who, who was doing what?
He was very apologetic and gracious, even after getting beat on.
How naive you are. That's politics speak. They all do that after they take some difficult. See, that's, let me, let me school you on something. When you ask a politician a question that might be difficult, their answer's gonna be, great question. I'm so glad to be here. That's called politics, bro. You should learn that.
Okay.
That's a, that's a very frequent pivot and response. Politicians across the world use that. You should learn that.
You got my, I, I don't think you got my comment, uh, the way it was intended, but, um, that's fine. That's, that's what you do. You know, you like to skate. But hey, I'm just reflecting and that, that's all, man. That's all I got. You know, no harm, no foul. You know, after 16 years, I'm still a listener. You ain't kinda, you know, you're not about to lose a P1 over an interview with him.
And, and I'm not concerned that I am. I never thought I would. I mean, I have no problem with you whatsoever, man.
But he is a bad candidate because he just has no connection to Cincinnati other than, I mean, when he compared Cincinnati to Buffalo, we don't, Cincinnati, we don't like being compared to nobody. We Cincinnati.
Hold on, let me get this straight. Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. So here I am dragging this man. Trying to, as you said, display my animus, but you agree, or you just said you think he's a bad candidate.
Yeah, as soon as he said that, I kinda like blacked him out. Like now, you know, Cincinnati, we would never compare Cincinnati to another city. We don't even like being called a scale model of New York City with all the bridges. So as soon as he said that, I turned him out. The rest of it, I was listening to for entertainment and I wasn't entertained. That's all.
Okay, well, I'm not entertained by your comments right now, then.
I didn't call to entertain you. I came to talk, I called to talk to you.
Do that interview to entertain you.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Yes, you did.
No, I didn't.
This is a podcast. People listen to be entertained or informed.
Exactly. I did it to inform you, exactly.
Uh, okay, well, I wasn't entertained. I was informed by him of who he was. I needed no misinformation about him. But realized he's not a candidate, a serious candidate.
Mission accomplished. I wanted to inform you and you were informed.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Uh, hey, you wanna pull some more muscles, patting yourself on the back?
I might.
Okay, all right. I'll holler at you at another moment. Ooh.
Appreciate the call. We'll go ahead and rack him. I, I'm not surprised by fame. I mean, you know, he's been on that contrarian tip for a while now and, uh, he's more than welcome to his opinion. You know, it is what it is. We all got one. Five one three eight seven three seven one three four. But it sounds like mission accomplished. Uh, that was for your information and he was informed. Simple as that. And, um, the school board is that serious? I mean, that's my first school board candidate kicking it off. So, yeah, we might spend 45 minutes with every single candidate. Uh, I have allowed at least 30 minutes. So we might. It depends on the nature of the conversation and where the conversation goes. I mean, uh, do I anticipate that with every candidate? We'll see. We'll see. I mean, the conversation goes that way. If they say something, they're like, huh, I need to go down that route. Okay, it might. If they've got some controversial, uh, things in their background that we need to get to the bottom of, sometimes when you're unpeeling an onion, it takes a little while. You know what I'm saying? I mean, it's just like when you unpeeling an orange. You know what I'm saying? You take your time with it because you wanna destroy the fruit and the inside. Same thing with the interview. Let me handle the interviews, okay? And you handle the howling and we'll be good. But I do appreciate it, though. Uh, five one three eight seven three seven one three four. Uh, Bunky writes, my neighbor is black. Wow. That was interesting. That was quite interesting. Um, I, I can't wait to listen back myself, actually. Uh, let's go back to the phones. Let's welcome in John from Princeton, New Jersey. Everybody stand up. Salute. Good morning, John.
Good morning, Mr. Nathan Ivy and the good people of Cincinnati, as well as the good people around the world. And yes, I was choppers. How are you today, sir?
I'm doing great. Welcome.
Great. Well, you know, as I listened to your diatroph today and callers, and I'm sure everybody focused their energy. Okay, no problem. Get out of here. On the, uh, uh, debate last night, which I didn't pay any attention to watch it. I just saw the outtakes this morning. Wasn't missing nothing or seeing anything that I haven't heard over 30 or 40 years. Recycles questions, recycle answers. And half of them, we, as I've indicated many times, they're not gonna be standing between now and spring or summer. Where we'll know now down the candidates and probably couple of maybe still standing between now and the convention. I don't think the Democrat party wanna see three or four standing there going into that convention. So they'll be now or down and we're not, you know, I, I, I had no love lost to sit and listen to this circus of recycle, but I saw some of the outtakes and Cory Booker, it sounds like he was shining last night. Elizabeth Warren, you know, her usual diatrox, she stayed focused. A little bickering and backing and forth, going back and forth. And I do realize some of the, one of the TV stations indicated, it's not about fighting, it's about going after Donald Trump. So let's see what happens. Uh, it's a long way to go. I don't get too excited over this stuff. We'll see what happens. You know, I like to focus my energy once again on Ms. Jefferson, another black woman assassinated by the dog cops out there. Now, I know you cops out there listen to Mr. Nathan Ivy Show. And I'm not saying all cops are bad. No, I'm not saying that. I've always been consistent stating there is an element with every police department across the country that are corrupt and no good. And the hierarchies, captains, directors, they know who they are, but they want the dogs to get, to do what they wanna do. So they're not identified until they run amok. You know, people are up in arms about this beautiful sister and then finding out late last night. She has a, I think, is it a bachelor's degree in science and then she's going, she was in process of going for her masters? Ah, people are up in arms. And it's, her story is not gonna go away no time soon. I know our enemy want us to go away, wait for this dog come to trial. I see how, once again, I told you, I see how this is gonna play out. This guy is gonna walk. And I'll tell you why. You see that gun and we don't even know if that's her gun, if she had it in her hands. But I'm disturbed with, as I indicated, this shooting happened between one and two o'clock. I believe it's now narrowed down to two o'clock. And her body wasn't moved until about, uh, nine o'clock in the morning. And so it's all gonna come out in investigation. Nobody was identified. Family or anybody probably wasn't identified. So they had enough of time and they had to ramsack the house. We don't know if the gun was in her hands, if it wasn't in her hands. And I do not wanna see that child. When trial comes out, you don't put that child under the stand. You cannot allow that. And I hope the family and the lawyer does not allow that child to go on the stand. Cause he's gonna be cross-examined. They're gonna try to rip this child apart, part. You know, I see how the scenarios are playing out. He's not talking to the police. He's not talking to nobody. He's got a slick lawyer and they're preparing themselves a year from now to how this is all gonna play out. And I personally think he's gonna walk. Cause he's gonna go in there and he's gonna get on the stand and lie from here to sundown that, ah, ah, she had a gun in her hand. Oh, well, how do you know that? You're behind the window. The shades were drawing. Yeah, how do you know she had a gun in her hands? Oh, I can see between the shades. You know, he's gonna lie and a jury is gonna find him innocent. He's gonna get his job back.
You think so?
Fight to get his job back. Excuse me?
I don't know, man. It's, this, this seems a little different. I mean, you, you got the police chief coming out saying that he never should've shot her. Basically, they just, they just basically signed a check for a civil lawsuit against the Fort Worth Police for the family. Uh, by the statements of the police chief just off the top. He came out and said the guy was dead wrong and that he's gonna be held criminally responsible. You don't normally, this quickly, you normally don't see it this quickly for people to come out and say that things, man. I think this might be a little bit different, John. I think this might be a little bit different, John.
Well, you know, the police chiefs can say whatever they want, they can play the game, but to release this guy on what, two hundred dollars, two hundred thousand dollar bond? To release this guy? That's a slap on the hand. That's nothing, to let this guy walk out that easy? And we don't know what his buddy, now remember, nobody's talking about the other cop that was on the scene with him. You know, that's gonna come out, too. Both of them had enough of time after the shooting, between the time they called the cops, and between that body was moved, we don't even know if the family was notified. So they might have been sitting in there cleaning up the mess, taking the gun, who knows if the gun was in her hand or not, we don't know that. They can tell you anything, you think I believe what these cops say? No, I don't. I don't believe nothing that they say. They have plenty, this reminds me of OJ all over again. Plant the scene, put things on the scene, mess it up, but the truth, let's see, it will come out. And hopefully, this lawyer can, when we go to trial, the cross-examination, I do not wanna see that child on the stand. Cause if that child gets on the stand, he's gonna be sunk by those, that his, that lawyer on that day. He, he will not survive on that stand. You don't want a child up there at that age, he should not be there. And I see how it's playing out. It's playing out that way, I'd like to hear your comments, what do you think?
I, I told you what I think, man, I, I don't think that's what's gonna happen. I think this is a little bit different. I think this looks different, I mean, typically with an offer involved, involved shooting, it, within, within a week, the chief is holding a press conference saying that the officer was wrong. That's rare, cause usually what happens, they circle the wagons. That's usually what happens, so, uh, we will see. I mean, the guy's dead wrong, we know that, he didn't follow procedure in Fort Worth, the chief said that. Uh, he was also resistant and didn't really wanna cooperate, cooperate with investigators after the shooting, which is probably what cooked this goose. I don't know, I think this is gonna be different, uh, John, I think this might be different.
Well, explain to me, how does the prosecutor in that area allow this guy to walk out of there on two hundred thousand dollar bond? All, all-out murder, and you're gonna let him walk? See, once again, this, this proves my theory, there are two sets of laws in this country, one for white and one for black. You put a black person and a white person side by side, they commit the same crime. Eighty percent of the time, the white guy gets a lesser sentence than the black guy. That's historically, it's always been proven, it's always been a fact. So, to let this guy walk out at two hundred thousand, what kind of message are you sending to black people across the country? What kind of message are you sending to the police department? That you can be judge, jury, and executioner, and nobody's gonna do anything about you.
I, I agree with you, I, I would say that maybe the bond is a little low, but again, in America, you are innocent until proven guilty in a court of law. He has not, he has not had that process yet, and so he's afforded due process like everybody else is. And part of due process is, if the judge says you get bail, you get bail. So I agree with what you're saying, but I'm saying, in reality is, he hasn't been convicted of anything yet, and this is what, the way the process goes.
But, but Nathan, what is the judge saying by allowing him to be released? Yeah, yeah, sure, I, okay, I, I get, I get it, I understand what you're saying. Innocent until proven guilty, I understand that. But, uh, as that neighbor stated, he didn't even identify himself. He's yelling outside screaming, and even if she did have the gun in her hand, we don't know that. I mean, they know, him and his partner can lie and say anything, I understand, which is what's gonna happen, I see that playing out. But, you know, to let, for that judge to let him to be released at two hundred thousand? Are you kidding me?
What the judge is saying is that he doesn't, he thinks that, he thinks that's the measure of his flight risk and also risk to the neighborhood. That's what the judge is clearly legally communicating, so-
Risk to, risk to the neighborhood?
The ju, the judge is saying that, that he doesn't believe that he's that much of a risk. Again, it's hard for me without any insight to just give you my thoughts based upon a scale that I'm not sure of what it is. Like, if it was five hundred thousand dollars, what qualifies that or eight hundred thousand dollars? I think that the higher the bond amount, what the judge is saying means, the higher the flight risk you are, and the higher the risk you are as a threat to the community. And for two hundred thousand dollars, to me, the judge is communicating, and he doesn't think either of those things are high when it comes to this officer, Aaron, um, Dean. So I think to answer your question directly, that's what it says.
And, and, and tell me if I'm wrong, I, I'm think, I, I've heard something on one of the stations, that this is not the first dance that this guy has had with the community. I think something else, I think, okay, he was hired in the last April la, last year, but something else came up, and I'm looking, researching, trying to, researching, trying to find out what was that other incident? And that may come out probably in the trial, too. Well, let's see how this played out, but I'll, I'll end with this. You know, at some point, the black community across the country have to make a decision. You put these police in place in the communities, one, this doesn't happen in any other community except the black and Latino community. And lately, over the last two or three years, you haven't heard much in, about the Latino community going through this, only in the black community. At some point, I think it's time to say, enough is enough. Our taxpayers' dollars are put into these police departments to do what? Execute us? Well, I think it's time for the police to get the hell out of our community, let us police our own community. The only time we want you in cases of murder, murder, that's it. But stop coming in our community, out, it's time to get the hell out. That's what needs to happen. Shock, shock and awe, tell the police, you are not coming in our community no more, we don't need you. If this is what you're gonna do, it's a pattern, I blame the leaders, yes, I blame the leaders. We allow this mess to happen, and I blame us, too, as a people, we allow it to happen.
Right, we do that, and we write Zorro on the ballot, you're right about that. Well, John, thank you for the call, man, anything else?
That's all I can think about, okay, Pamela, you can come out and shower now, have a nice day.
See, we'll rack 'em, yeah, see, see. All right, uh, we're gonna go over ten AM this morning, because we haven't talked about LeBron James. We haven't talked about, really gotten deep into or played any audio for you from last night. I wanna give you a sense of what the headlines are about the presidential debate, debate last night, in case you didn't get a chance to, to view it yet. Um, and also give you a sense of what the national polls are, okay? So there's a lot of things to talk about. Uh, people are saying that LeBron James is a coward. Yeah, NBA superstar LeBron James, in an interview, said that Houston Rockets general manager Daryl Morey was quote-unquote misinformed, and wasn't educated on the situation at hand when he tweeted in support of Hong Kong's freedom demonstrations. So Daryl Morey, who was a white male, he's the general manager of the Houston Rockets, and he shared an image of a slogan that read, "Fight for Freedom, Stand With Hong Kong." Even though he eventually deleted the tweet. Now, why is this? Well, there's been a lot talked about between the relationship between China and Houston, and not just Houston, but, uh, the NBA. And apparently, there's a lot of financial and long-term relationships that the NBA wants to do, uh, work in China. Now, here's one question. Is this a case of the NBA putting money and profit over human rights? Cause that's what the fundamental question is when it comes to this whole thing with LeBron James. Then LeBron James comes out and says that basically, that, like I said, Daryl Morey was uneducated. And we already know that China is, as they call it, one of the last bastions of communism. Re-education camps, uh, are in place right now, filled with people who have dared to think differently than the power structure in China. And then you got LeBron James, a kid from Akron, commenting on this, why? Well, here's my take, this is, the, the league called LeBron and said, hey, buddy, we need you on this one. Don't you wanna be a funeral, a future owner? Uh, and LeBron James did what he had to do, uh, for the shield, that's what I think. And then LeBron put out a statement talking about, yeah, you know, we gotta be careful, there's a lot of financial and spiritual and all kind of other issues that, that, that are at stake here, huh? Now, how can you, on one hand, purport to be a champion of social justice? You come out and support a Colin Kaepernick and all this other kind of stuff? But then you wanna go with the dominant power structure in China? I mean, for folks that had a brain for these kind of things, you've been watching it, I wonder what you think about it. Five one three eight seven three seven one three four, this may or may not be on your radar screen. I don't think there's anything wrong with exporting capitalism per se. But when you start supporting tyrants because it might affect capitalism, uh, well, hold on. Hold on a second. I mean, should the NBA be playing games in China and trying to do business with businesses in China, or with China? I don't know. Quote, "My team in this league just went through a difficult week." It's LeBron James. "I think people need to understand what a tweet or statement can do to others, and I believe nobody stopped and considered what would happen." So here he is, a player who's not even on the Rockets, commenting about what the general manager of the Rockets, who ain't even a player, did in a tweet. What the hell? That's because LeBron set himself up to be an NBA owner one day. This is NBA owner type stuff. The Chinese Basketball Association cut ties with the Rockets because apparently they've got a relationship. You ever had, you ever heard of Chinese Iverson? There's a player in China, they call him Chinese Iverson. He ain't like Iverson, but you know, he's pretty dope with the basketball. Kind of interesting, I throw it out there on your radar screen, it may or may not be, uh, on, a top of mind to you. That was hilarious. Oh, shit, somebody wrote, uh, "The new masculinities did a review of the interview," that's hilarity, hilarious. That is hilarity, that's hilarious. Uh, the new masculinity. That, what is wrong with Pharrell, I never understand it. Um, say here, the new, yeah, I don't know what the hell Fame was talking, he was just being a contrarian. I mean, sometimes it's so obvious, the Fame just wanna just kicked up some dust sometime. You know what I'm saying? We cool, we, we can do that, too. Ray writes, he's supposed to do his research on the parents, children, current issues, past derelictive duties, and the overall temperament of the communities, period. If you're not prepared, again, get, right? Thank you, Ray. If you're running for school board, you should not be thrown off about a cu, a question about what's your educational background. And you're not gonna throw me off by telling me you come from an education background, cause your parents got college degrees. Do I look stupid? Do I look stupid to you? Do I sound stupid? I'm not. I know the difference between answering a question and trying to give me some BS. And that didn't, that didn't come nowhere near answering the question. If you're running for school board, you should not be taken aback about if someone asks you if you ever volunteered for school, for Cincinnati Public Schools, cause it's too easy to do it. All you gotta do is go to Marson and put an application, and then choose a school, and when they get some openings, there it is. You know, you know, like I said, I hear candidates talking, black, blacky, black, black, you on that blackish, cool, where you been? Before you decided to run for office? Where you been? What have you done? The answer could have been, hey, man, I've been doing this, and I work with this, and sometimes I volunteer on Sundays over here, and I'm doing this. I mean, I didn't come up with the answer, I'm just asking the questions. Those are all fair questions, if you're running for school board. Have you ever attended a school board meeting? That's like saying you wanna run for city council, and you never went to a city council meeting. You ain't never been? I saw Jeff Pastor at city council meetings before he was elected to city council. You, and, and to me, a good answer isn't, I watched it on city cable. See, what that tells me is your value system. It ain't worth enough to you to get in the car and drive up to Marson, unless you on the school board. You walking in with some say-so. Some, y'all need to get some, get it together, that don't make no sense. That don't make no sense. Hold on, I'm getting more texts here. Text messages here. Okay, all right, good morning to you, Stephanie. I think it was all fair questions. Um, Mason Mahler writes, free black rusher because the babysitter is weird. Yeah, yeah, he was on one this morning, but it is what it is. Uh, CJ Doh writes, I take Steve doesn't read the local newspaper, the story came out two days ago, and you know nothing about it, huh? Yeah, okay. Ray writes, Nathan, thank you, you are correct, digging all the answers, if you can't take the questions, get, right? It ain't personal, I don't have personal, nothing personal against nobody. Ain't that, I'm just trying to get there, you know, as I sat there and listened to it, these were some of the, the biggest question marks that I never heard anybody ask directly. Now, he could have done some interviews, and everybody asked the same questions I just asked, I haven't heard them. You know what I'm saying? So I wanted to get a sense of who he was as a man, I said that caveat at the very beginning. Who are you as a man? Cause you gonna be a man up there, you ain't gonna be no Democrat, you ain't gonna be this or that, you ain't gonna be a lawyer, whatever, you're gonna be a man in that role. The sum total of your experiences are going to inform you in that role. So it's completely legitimate to ask you what your sum total of experiences are. Because that's what's gonna guide and shape any man or woman that's in any position like that. It's gonna be them. The things they've done, their experiences, their sphere of influence, their attitude, their mentality, that's what's gonna make, drive the decisions. You know, all that stuff about the fiduciary, they got a treasurer up there at CPS, these school board members ain't running that damn, uh, the, the, the budget? The treasurer's doing that. The school board members get elected, then they gotta sit down with the treasurer to learn how to even read the budget. That's how that works? They all got those questions answered, they got that down. What are you gonna do specifically? What are your, your top three, you know, uh, things you wanna accomplish? What's the biggest issues right now, and who are you? That's what I'm interested in. Riley Flo writes, Tiffany, Nate know what he did, he had a problem with Meagly, they came out during the whole interview, no way in hell anyone could come out of that interview feeling good about Meagly. I mean, why don't you just call him up, so y'all can hook up Broadway? And you can put your, your lips on his ass directly. Mwah, what are you talking about, B? You and Meagly need to get a room and handle that, Broadway, stop it. I ask the questions, I don't determine the answers. If I ask you a question about, what's your connection to the black community? The answer is based upon what you've done. That's what it's, it's not based upon me. If I ask you, you've ever gone to a school board meeting? The answer is based upon what you have done. If I ask you if you ever volunteered, or you have an educational background, the answer is based upon you, not me. If you don't like scary answers, don't take public positions. Period. That's the way it goes. You're running for office, people gonna ask you this stuff. It might seem like it's on target, it may not, but it is. Cause we trying to get a sense of who you are. Like I said, I've been doing this long, everybody know the right answers, they'll hit you down, oh, did, 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 and they'll hit you with some stuff you don't know, did, did, did. Ah, 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 yeah, uh-huh, mm-hmm, I'm gonna do it my way. I'm gonna do it my way to try to get a sense of who you are, and I'm gonna let the people decide for themselves. But Broadway, I, you must be in the same car as Fame this morning, what are you talking about? I had a problem with Meagly, Meagly, I told you I had a problem with him. I got a problem with anybody using black people as props, period. I wanna know, who are these black people that's in this photograph? Who these little black kids that's wearing your t-shirt? Do you know these people? Yeah, I had a problem with that, and I asked the question, the man answered, I didn't harp on it, I moved on. What are you talking about? I didn't harp on it. Simple as that. Uh, boy. See here. Uh, Tiffany writes, it wasn't a question, it's the tone you use, you a hos, you use a hostile tone, makes listening to the interview a bit uncomfortable. Well, we gotta make up our minds, do we wanna be comfortable or uncomfortable? Is, is what we trying to get, and where we trying to get to, something that makes us comfortable? I mean, is the road toward that a road of comfort or uncomfortability? I would say it's probably a road paved with some uncomfortable times. And, and I, 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 listen, I can't speak to, everybody's entitled to their own opinion, I, I, it is what it is. I can't speak to the tone, I have to go back and listen to it. That's probably my, I'm, I'm sensing, uh, my spider senses going off tone. Uh, Lawrence writes, fact, Tiffany, we've heard this show before, we listen every day. Uh, Ansel writes, yes, the voice of inflection and dismissiveness was apparent. Uh, y'all tripping, y'all need to stop. Um, let's see. Uh, Tracy writes, your faithful listeners, happiness should come before yours, my two cents. No, that's not how it works, no. Because that's impossible, it's impossible to make, uh, a whole lot of people happy, mm-mm, no. You try that and tell me how it works, Tracy. That's not how that works. Happiness is the wrong word. Happiness is the wrong word. Um, let's see. Let me see. Uh, and then the second thing about this is I try to take a lot of questions from the, from the audience. So if there's a question that you feel like I'm missing, you have more than enough of an opportunity to ask that question. More than enough. I try to get them in. In fact, there, there was about five minutes there where I was just trying to go directly straight to you because I may not ask every question. I may miss something that's really, really important. So I try to make sure, I try to get your questions in as well, so. Uh, and I'm grown. I don't care what grown, other grown folks think about my tone. So what? It is what it is. I'm nobody's child, trust me. My mother is at her house. My mother's not in here. Just so we can all be sure. See here. Talking about my tone. The hell? When did I become your child? Nobody's child, except my mama and my father. That's it. Uh, let me see. Uh, Mike writes, "I think it was a good interview because I got a, a good sense of the person running. And what I heard was not good. You do a service to the community with that type of interview. Thank you so much, Mike. Appreciate that." Talking about my tone. What the fuck? Y'all is tripping. Y'all tripping. Uh, let me see. Uh, let me see here. And see, you know what? I'm just so glad that, I'm so glad you said that because it really crystallizes something I've been thinking for a while. And I want to say this again. Black people are not a monolith. All black people do not see any issues the same. And I'm very, I admit it. You know, the way, I, I don't speak for the community. I speak for myself. And there is members of the community that listen to the show. Because if you line up 10 black people and ask them all the same answer, question about real serious issues, you might get 30 different answers. And then you might get 30 different approaches to that. You know what I'm saying? And we gotta be mindful of that, I think. Um, let's see. Y'all is tripping. My tone? Get, you should be used to it by now. It is what it is. Uh, TNT writes, "Right, I wish more police departments were not afraid to hold bad officers accountable." Yeah, I think that John is wrong on that. I think he's wrong. He's, uh, to me, this is coming, again, we have to wait and see because it can look like whatever, then we get to the trial and we know what can happen there. But I'm seeing some things that are a little bit different from the police. Like typically, you don't see the chief coming out within one week. This man has had two or three press conferences. At every press conference, he's pushing it even harder and harder. That Officer, uh, Aaron, and I'm struggling to remember his last name. Hold on, let me look at it real quick. That, uh, Aaron Dean, that Officer Aaron Dean, in fact, he said he would have been fired if he didn't resign. Okay? But is this window dressing? Is this talking tough and then nothing really is gonna happen? Hmm. I'm shocked by some of these comments in here, but again, I, we're all, we can agree to disagree. Um, let's see. "Today in Fort Worth, a conference on police oversight is being held. Fort Worth Police isn't a part of it. Best practices from across the country are in Fort Worth, and the department isn't a part of it." Huh? Uh, interesting. Um, let's see here. That's funny. LeBron James is now a professional negro. Uh, man, Serenthia writes, "Nate said, 'Do I look stupid?'" My fire on said, "Nope. Now stop saying that. That's a bad word." Okay, I, I, I did, I will stop using that word. Sorry about that. Know the young ones that are listening. Uh, "The Rockets will always be connected to China because of Yao Ming." Yeah, there is a connection between, there's an international connection between the city of Houston, whether that be to China and also, uh, to Saudi Arabia, uh, and the Arabian Peninsula in general that goes back a long time with the oil bankers, the Bush, um, uh, the, the, the Bin Ladens, the Ben Mafussis. I mean, there, there's a real international flavor in long time history that I'm not telling you I'm full aware of. I've just read about it here and there over the years with the country of China, so. We'll see, you know, we'll see, we'll see what's up. Uh, Tracy writes, "You're right, black people are not a monolith, but if we don't agree or think like you, it's a problem." Well, give me an example of that. What do you mean? I don't need anybody to think like me. Never have. And, and I don't mind if people disagree. What I'm not gonna deal with is fuck shit that's dressed up like just some normal disagreement. I ain't gonna tolerate that. I'm gonna call it out every single time. I ain't got no problem, I ain't got no problems with it. No, 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 no. Because I'm grown. I'm a human being like everybody else. You know what I'm saying? So that's two different things. And I can see the difference. Trust me. Um, so give me an example of that. I don't think so. It's a show. So if somebody calls in and they have a different agreement, we might have a, a conversation or debate about it. But in the end of the day, I'm not here to make people feel the way I believe. I just put it out there. Um, see, well, Tracy, what I would say is any talk show that you listen to, any talk show, if you call into the show or you text into the show that you disagree, then more than likely, you're going to engage in a back and forth with that person. Because that person is going to say, okay, let me reiterate where I stand. And they're gonna push back on you unless they say, oh, well, that's a great point, which I have no problem saying. Uh, Iris writes, "Nathan, I didn't sense any inflection that wasn't necessary. Steve rambles and is very confusing with his answers." Yeah, people hear what they want to hear. People project what they want to hear on people that they want to project it on for their own personal reasons. I already know that. It's all cool. Uh, Nate, "I'm pushing 50. Fuck a tone. You gonna get what you get. Right." I mean, tone? I'm grown, grown. Yeah, I might have a tone. And tell me a talk show host who don't. Keep it real. If you got some other issue, put that out there. Don't try to talk about its tone or some other BS. Just be real. Because I would. Uh, Drop writes, "Wow, Chopper's defending a Republican guest on the Nathan Ivey Show? Mr. Mahler, AKA Overseer, you got some runways." I don't think they're defending him. I don't hear that. No, I don't see anybody defending him per se, but if they do, okay, that's fine. I mean, just because Steve is a Republican and a white male doesn't mean that people won't vote for him. I mean, there's people that'll hear this interview and be like, well, I still like him. Okay, cool. That's on you. I mean, we all have to make our criteria as to why we make our decisions. Um, but I'm just telling you how I feel about it. Um, let's see here. Uh, TNT writes, "Since I, since it was 12 contenders in the debate last night, who were your top five? Were there any candidates that surprised you that you want to hear more of?" Well, here's what the numbers say. Let me jump into the numbers here. What is it, 10:20? Okay, I'm probably gonna go to about 10:30. So here's some of the headlines. Let's start with the headlines first from across the country. Uh, Warren's, Warren's Charm, Charmed Campaign just entered a new brutal phrase. Uh, here's another one. "It's looking like a two-person race for the Democrats." Do you feel the same way? Five winners and three losers from last night's debates. Who are the winners and losers? In your opinion? Who stood out to you? Some of the poll numbers, nationally, Warren is tracking at about 29.4%. I'm sorry, Biden is nationally, uh, these are poll averages, so not from just one poll. But I'm at, I'm at Real Clear Politics right now. You can go and follow along for yourself. Uh, it's a very popular site where you can get these poll numbers up to date. So Biden, Warren, Sanders, uh, let me see, Butt, Edge, Edge, Harris, Owork, Yang. That was in the national. In Iowa, I'm just giving you the list from top to bottom, like who is statistically, uh, from this particular poll in number one and then all the way down. Warren, Biden, Sanders, Butt, Edge, Edge, Harris, Klobuchar, Steyer. Why do you think Steyer hasn't taken off more? I mean, he had this whole impeach Trump campaign before the Democrats really picked up from it. Uh, let's go to the phones. Uh, good morning. Welcome to the show.
What up though, Nate? What it do?
I'm doing great, man. Hold on one second, man. Listen, I've already told you, B, we'll catch up with you later, man. I had to put you on timeout. You're very disrespectful. You don't appreciate getting on the air here. But we'll talk to you in a couple of months, man. Appreciate you, though. I really do. I love the fact you love the show, but I ain't got time for your nonsense. Just being real with you. Um, let's see, New Hampshire, Warren, Biden, Sanders, Butt, Edge, Edge, Harris, Yang, Klobuchar. Okay, that's from New Hampshire. Warren at 27.3%, Biden 24%. I mean, we've seen, are we seeing a new frontrunner here? Is Warren, is this Warren and Biden? I mean, if Warren and Biden teamed up, would that be a better ticket? Not a lot of color. Tell me, not a lot of diversity there? I don't know. Um, see, Nevada, Biden, Warren, Sanders, Harris, in that order, top to bottom. South Carolina, Biden, Warren, Sanders, Harris. Very similar to Nevada as well. So, you know, overall, it seems as if Warren has further solidified herself as one of the frontrunners. And the major challenger to Joe Biden. Uh, Mason Mahler writes, "Why you warning me, Nate?" I don't remember that. Uh, Clumagic writes, "F your feelings. Answer the questions. I'm talking about that. Right." That's what I'm all about. People here talking about tone and inflection. What the hell? What the fuck are you talking about? Y'all is tripping. I thought we all was grown in here. Uh-huh. Or people just ain't used to hearing a conversation like that. Maybe that's what it is. You're not used to hearing an interview like that. I don't know. Uh, but I give Steve props. I do. He came to the show. He answered all the questions and, uh, he was out. Appreciate it. Uh, Iris writes, "It took more offense on him coming on here with nothing. Please come with more than y'all stupid and listen to me because I'm white and Republican." That's how I heard him. Made me something, she writes. Uh, Tony writes, "The dude thought he was gonna make a typical call and push the usual talking points. He should have known better. Go to a school board meeting first." Right. He thought he was gonna do the typical interview. This ain't the typical interview place. I mean, I'm gonna ask those questions, but at this point, you can find plenty of places to hear all that shit. I want to know who the man is. I said it again. I might take a different, slightly different approach. Uh, but back to the base last night. What was your biggest takeaway? Uh, who stood out to you? Uh, do you now have a new frontrunner? Um, if, if you're looking, if you're somebody who's like Black Agenda First, uh, with the latest debate, are you more now in line with somebody? Yeah, I don't know. Tell me. Uh, Mason writes, "Do, Mason Mahler writes, "Do we need a chop shop safe place?" Iris writes, "Nathan, please ask Fame to not wear his new masculinity panties tomorrow. We would all appreciate it." Oh, boy. Oh, boy. Uh, let me see here. Um, let's see, Mike Jones writes, "I'm like, this is crazy. A drop. I see why Cranley beating Vette Simpson. Some of these Negroes gotta make white folks comfortable shaking my damn head." Uh, let me see here. Let me see here. Um, Nathan writes, "Nice for what?" Right. Nice for what? I mean, we gotta make up a decision. I mean, is it serious enough for have us to have uncomfortable conversations? Or is we just talking ish and we really don't want to do that? We really just want to rubber stamp these people and let them get on school board and it don't really matter? And it don't really matter what they had a, any connection with the community and it, it don't really matter, you know? You know, you know, what they really believe and what they stand on. It just, oh, you know, you know, we just supposed to take Steve for his word. You know, he, he gonna be a bull in a china shop and he's gonna challenge the incumbents and that's just the end of the story. That's a simpleton's viewpoint. Not, we not simpletons here in Cyber Wakanda Nathan Ivey Show. We ain't doing that. I'm not doing it. Tanika writes, "Nate, you on one today, but I ain't mad, lol." Yeah, people get brand new. People, I'm telling you, man, brand newness in the black community is at an all-time high. I, I experienced it last night. Can't believe this, brother. I'm like, what? Now all of a sudden, you don't know me? I, I was just with you last week. You, you dapping me up and hugging me all night? What, 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 how's the show? Uh-huh. The show's great, by the way. People, man. That's people for you. 513-873-7134, if you want to share your thoughts. TNT writes, "I like what Yang was saying, and Tom Steyer was giving it straight, no chasers. I appreciate Julian Castro speaking the truth to the epidemic of police violence on citizen stock right there." There is a woman in the Columbus area right now. I cannot recall her name. She's been living in Columbus area for about 22 years. Uh, she's undocumented and she's about to be deported. And it was reported on local news in Columbus, because I was listening to local news in Columbus as I drove into the event yesterday, that Julian Castro was the only, uh, candidate that made time to meet with her. So I just want to put that out there, little Julian Castro. He was the only person who was reported to meet with her. Now, whatever that means is whatever it means. It might mean nothing. I just want to put it out there for you. Uh, but to continue, she writes, um, uh, "Julian Castro speaking truth to the epidemic of police violence on citizens." He was the only one. Booker did better. I did hear too many played out references. Everyone was ganging up on Warren and Biden just didn't look sharp. Everybody's ganging up on Warren because Warren's the new frontrunner. So if you go to a debate with 12 people, what are you trying to do? If you're on a stage with 12 people, what are you trying to do? What you're trying to do is stand out. You stand out by going after who everybody perceives or the poll numbers or the popular thought is, is currently the frontrunner. Because you want to distinguish yourself. So if Warren's the frontrunner and you're not, when you come out of the debate, you want to be people, you want people talking about you just like they're talking about Warren. If she's number one or two, you want to be three. You want to be right there with her. And that's why they gonna focus on her. Just like early on, everybody focused on Joe Biden because he was the frontrunner. And that's just the way it's gonna be. You, you, you're a frontrunner, you got a target on your back. That's what it is. Uh, what's up with Biden? Is Biden fading? Health issues? How do you feel about Biden? How do you feel about these folks? Because one of them could very well be the next president. It could happen just that quickly. It could happen just that quickly. Let me get back to this. Five winners and three losers from last night's debate, CNN debate. This is from Vox. Vox writes, uh, "The big winner was Bernie Sanders, big looter, loser, Joe Biden." Do you agree with that? You agree with that? Uh, they're saying that Joe Biden, I'm sorry, that Bernie Sanders entered the race on the ropes. He was on the ropes. And now he might be making a comeback. And of course, Bernie was recently hospitalized after a heart attack and had emergency surgery. So if anybody needed to really stand out, you know, it was Bernie Sanders. He needs to, 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 to let people know, let his supporters know, and people that's on offense about him, that I am healthy. I can do this. All right? Uh, what do you think? Um, he was stuck when you asked, "Had he ever gone to a school board meeting?" Then she shot a hole, hole in the boast when he identified as a Trumpster. Yeah, I mean, what? I, I can't believe that's not the first time he's been asked that. That's a very obvious question. It's so basic. Have you been to a school board meeting? That came from the audience. That didn't even come from me, but it's a very basic question. It's so basic that people might miss it. Have you gone to a school board meeting? Um, no, I watch it on TV like many people did the presidential debate last night. What? That example doesn't make any sense. The only way that it's consistent is that you're the act of watching TV. Contextually, everything else is completely different. Completely different. So if y'all got mad at that, wait till we talk to some of the other candidates. Because I, listen, I pay attention. And I've been developing my own flow and my own questions for weeks now. And, um, I have some very unique questions for a lot of these different candidates that may or may not be, have asked before, or you may not have thought about them, but I, I plan to put them to the people and we'll see. Uh, that's hilarious. See, right wingers, this is Mike Jones, "Right wingers like Willie Cunningham can be rude all day. Nate, can't help that he's a black man and we know that intimidates some. If you scared, go to church." People just selective in what they saying, dude. That's all that really comes down to. Uh, Robert Flo writes, "It's okay, Nate. Let me know when you use that tone with every guess." Um, I don't, listen, I'm gonna do what I want to do, the way I want to do it. My voice gonna sound the way I want it to be, period. My voice gonna sound the way I want it to be, period. And I'm not checking back with you when I do whatever I'm doing. Just listen to it or don't, period. Not even getting into that with you about my tone and all that. I'm grown. Don't give a damn. Any grown person don't like my tone? So what? Period. Um, see, Broadway flow writes, I'm right. So Nathan deflects and makes nine points. Tone Nate, tone. Like Tony, Tony, Tony? It's about, the only tone I wanna talk about is Tony, Tony, Tony. Maybe tone low. Something like that. Um, see. Okay, I'm going back now here. Mike writes, those folks in Hong Kong ever stand up for black oppression in America, KKK? Bron is saying y'all ain't about to stop my money train. Okay. Um. Somebody says LeBron's a professional Negro. We back on that phrase again. I don't even know what that means. I really don't. Still searching for a definition. Still searching for it. Fame writes Nike, uh, LeBron handled this since you're such an activist. Uh, Bunky writes LeBron is a cool lane. See, now y'all gonna turn on LeBron. LeBron is a, listen, LeBron wants to own an NBA franchise one day. He's one of the biggest stars in the NBA. So he setting himself up for that longevity. I, I see it. Uh, but if people wanna call him out on his consistency when it comes to human rights violations and free speech and things like that, I think he opened the door for it. Uh, somebody writes, he does not vote, turning down the volume. Talking about John. I've never seen anybody like that in my entire life. You know what I'm saying? Um. Broadway flow writes, Nate's panties in a bunch. Uh, Nathan, it should be expected of people who are running for office, we should raise the bar of expectations and results. He never went to a school board meeting. Oh, my goodness. Well, damn. Yeah. Never went to a school board meeting? That's a little different now cuz now that tells me that you're not even willing to do some research. Like I told you, I saw Jeff Pastor going as, he was going to city council meetings before he was on city council. And I could tell he was sitting there, he was watching, he was just taking it all in. You know, being vote, being visible, letting his presence be known. I saw him do that. How do I know? Cuz I was there reporting on other stuff and I'm like, oh, Jeff down here doing his thing. Alright, you know, so that just makes sense. Like if you're running for school board, you should at least attend one school board meeting. At least one? Just so you know what happens? Cuz does everything get caught on camera? Yes and no. Yes and no. I don't know. I mean, to me, I think it's big, but to others, they might not think it's big. It is what it is. Um, let me see here. Uh, when Joe Madison asked Bernie Sanders if as prayers he would apologize for slavery and he couldn't answer, I knew he was suspect. Uh, yeah. Yeah, I mean, some answers shouldn't throw you off. I mean, some questions shouldn't throw you off, shall I say? In my opinion, I mean, some questions, it should be like automatic, like boom, there it is. Real simple. Make it easy for the people. Okay? Um, let's see here. Uh, Mason Marla writes, tricks is for kids. Just mature folks that come in, not be a narcissist, understand A, they don't know everything. B, others are entitled to their own opinion and not be disrespectful unless disrespect is warranted. The end. Uh, Tanika writes, people are something else. Um. I think I got most of them in. Why can't I watch school board meetings in the comfort of my home? Niwa, please. Did he say that? I don't know, man. If somebody's running for city council and I say you ever been to city council meeting? And they say, well, I watched it. The first thing you're gonna think is, damn, you can't even invest the time and the energy to go down there yourself? And just be there? And see what it's really all like and, and see how it works and things like that from the opposite side? I mean, again, I mean, depending, again, I would say, I, I would say that it. Definitely. Definitely says something about. How serious you are about it. And that's just me. Uh, the greatest from South Central, X squad affiliate squad up writes, good morning, Nate. Hey, what's up, the greats? D. Greats from South Central. What's up, man? Are you in South Central right now? Ray writes, dollar to a donut. He'll be at the next, the next school board meeting. If he's smart, he will be. If he's smart, he will be. He should have already done it. I wouldn't be surprised. I wouldn't be surprised if we see him like doing a Facebook live or maybe just post a photograph of him at the school board meeting cuz he should be there. The Mason Marla writes, the alt fiddle seems shook. And he says, yes. Okay, cool, man. Tony writes, that's exactly what he said, Nate. I was done then. I went to Big Lots. Did you? You went to Big Lots? And you're back already? That is hilarious. Hey, listen, folks, uh, I wanted to, we coming up on 11 AM this morning. Listen, uh, that interview was up, please share it. Go back, listen to it. Um, and I think everybody deserves our attention. And a serious thought about whether they are right for the school board right now. And um, across the board, again, I'm not caught up with Democrat and Republican. I, I promise you I'm not. I lean more to the progressive Democrat side, but in terms of, you know, people being effective, I mean, you could have an effective Republican. You know, I think Gary Favre is just Republican. That doesn't mean that he should be invalidated. Now, I got some questions. I got some serious questions. For any black Republican, I'm gonna question you, period. It, it's just gonna happen. But I, I, I don't think that party affiliation alone should disqualify somebody. It really depends. I think it depends on the individual. And I'll say it again, we need black people to be Republicans. We need black folks to be a part of Republican Party and bring some damn sense to it. So I have no issue with it, but you know, hopefully, you know, when we, listen, there's another school board candidate and I'm thinking. Hmm, I'm not sure if this gonna work out. Ain't really sure. Um, see. Angela writes, be well, all it's been a joy. Same to you, Angela. Appreciate you. Um, let me see here. Uh, Bunky writes, Biden is not fading. That old racist is dying live on TV. F him. What? Is that what he is now? That old racist? Oh, boy. Somebody should tell the Biden camp. Uh, Iris, Iris writes, my one third. She writes, I, I, I'm not sure what she's writing. Hey, why didn't Tom Steyer grow off? I don't know. I mean, he, he was on that impeach Trump stuff. Back with Mueller and the amog- amogument clause of the US Constitution, which says you can't basically make money. Off of being a president and his taxes. Steyer's been on that since day one. But yet, when he got into the race, he didn't never seem to really take off. Why do you think that is? Now I've seen him in separate interviews, he seems authentic. He seems authentic. I'm not sure if he is or not. I mean, he comes across as if he's authentic. He's a white billionaire hedge fund manager, right? Former hedge fund manager that made billions of dollars. And then, once he made all this money, he realized that the system was stacked against working class people. And he decided to dedicate himself to the political realm. So prior to, you know, being on the super, super Trump tip. He was on the exposing and talking about, you know, from a wealthy man's perspective, how the tax system was stacked against working class people. And then he made a pivot and started going super hard at Trump. ImpeachTrump.com. WWW, that was his vehicle. ImpeachTrump.com. That's what he was trying to ride that vehicle. Straight into impeachment and I thought he had a lot of support. He came to Cincinnati sometime within the last year. I think it was early this year, he came to Cincinnati and made a stop and made a speech and he was out, but. I don't know. I mean, I thought that, that maybe he would have a chance uh, to take a hold with the American imagination, but he did not. Some people are saying that Pete Buttigieg. Was one of the big winners from last night debate. Is that right? He's running as a pragmatist. Right? He's a Democrat, but he's a pragmatist. Another big winner from last night, which we haven't discussed, were the opioid epidemic activists. You know, the opioid epidemic activists. Uh, they are big winners uh, from last night. Cuz they spent a lot of time talking about the opioid epidemic. And there's a lot of groups out there that are trying to raise attention to this and trying to get, get money to, to deal with that. And again, that was started by the pharmaceutical industry. The American uh, Medical Association, doctors, that's what started this. Didn't come from the streets. So I think for people drawing attention to the opioid crisis, I think last night was a, a big win. You had at least two of the candidates that called for uh, the incarceration of pharmaceutical executives. And why not? Why shouldn't the pharmaceutical executives go to jail? I mean, if it, if it was found out that in fact, they were a part of what led to the, the opioid epidemic and the crisis. And it was done so uh, under a, a context or means that was less than, uh, let's say upfront and truthful. Meaning that they knew they were addicting people. Or they ran through the stop guy, scap- stopgaps and the safety signs and stop signs just to make more money. They should go to jail. I mean, is it fair to say that's like a white collar crime because we talking about pharmaceutical executives? Is that fair to say? Yeah. Should go to jail. Why not? And see, when you start locking up these pharmaceutical executives. That sat back in boardroom meetings and, you know, trying to figure out how they can squeeze more profits out the next year. And they started making decisions and coming up with a plan to use doctors. Uh, you know, basically as their, their front persons for their drugs, knowing very well about the highly addictive properties. They should go to jail. Because if some of these drug manufacturers or these pharmaceutical industry executives start going to jail, the rest of them start paying attention. And you had Kamala Harris and Julian Castro that both called for locking up pharmaceutical executives last night. Would you be in favor of that? I would. I would. Do it. Uh, Andrew Yang ran for president in order to promote a concept, universal basic income. Are you aware of that concept? It's the idea that the government should dispense a guaranteed sort of stipend to every single citizen. Universal basic income. Okay? He's calling it a freedom dividend. A freedom dividend. What is that? That's an unusual, that's a different concept. Freedom dividend? What is Andrew Yang talking about? Yang, who has long said that if he becomes president. The government will send a check, $1,000 a month or $12,000 annually to every American adult. Every American adult. Uh, do you think that that? Is something that is plausible? Like, is, it sounds great, but is it something that is realistic? And can actually been put in place? Cuz you know, some of our conservative brothers and sisters, they gonna call that socialism. That's socialism right there. Um, let's see here. He wasn't alone in that, you know, Julian Castro, who was catching a lot of attention. He backed him up and said he liked the idea. Tulsi Gabbard uh, backed up Andrew Yang. Uh, my take, my only thing with Andrew Yang is no more jokes about how, you know. All of his friends are doctors and physicians and stuff like that, you know? You know, making these jokes, these uncomfortable jokes about being Asian American and racism. He, he's had, he's been a part of all that conversation throughout this whole year. You know, conversations about whether Asian American racism is, you know, looked upon the same way as racism against people. You know, African, uh, ADOS people, right? American descendants of slaves. He got caught up in that and he got caught out because he kept making these jokes about how he knows a lot of doctors and stuff like. You know, playing into the stereotype that Asians. Are the model minority. That's another phrase. You heard that phrase before? The model minority phrase. And it's the idea that there's one minority group that is the model for all of them. And a lot of people over the years have looked at the Asian community as that model minority group. So when Andrew Young Yang is making these jokes. And maybe he's trying, it's an icebreaker or whatever, he's actually paying back into that system. That he's saying that he has a problem with. Stop making jokes like that, Andrew Yang. However, hmm, I'm open to this. I'm, I'm kinda open to this. Uh, but again, what are your thoughts? People are saying that Joe Biden was a big loser. That his campaign is not going as he planned. He thought that he was gonna walk into the room and say, hey, Obama chose me and that was gonna be enough. And it's not enough. It's not enough. It's not enough at all, Joe. It doesn't explain some of his votes in the past, his statements. It don't explain any of that. And when he doubles down like, I'd do it again, I'd sign it again. It just makes it so much worse. It makes him come across as if. Well, we already got a white man in the White House like that. We don't need another one. Right? That's what it comes across. I'm telling you. And then there's a schism between younger African American voters and older African American voters. Older African American voters statistically love them some Joe Biden. They love him some JoJo. And I think it's because JoJo Biden. Is your life in order? I think it's because of his connections with Obama and people are waxing nostalgic. Like, oh, 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 he can't be that bad. He was with Obama. We'll have a connection to that Obama administration. Hmm. Not sure how important that really is. And then you got younger voters that don't really, African American voters statistically. That are not really feeling Biden. They got a lot of question marks about him, so he's got problems. It was all good just three weeks ago. Three months ago was all good. He ended the race with a lot of confidence, consistently polling as the frontrunner and now this. Now this. Um, let me see here. Yeah, I think I pretty hit the finer points that I wanted to hit this morning. Yeah, our governments, our government is socialism. We pay for their asses even though they leave office. I think $1,000 is too damn small. Uh, as long as Joe Biden keeps getting the black vote, he ain't going nowhere. Check the South Carolina polls. Okay, well, I will check the South Carolina polls. Matter of fact, let me go there right now. And again, folks, if you're ever like looking for polls or looking for a place for politics, and this is not the only place. But one resource is a website called Real, R E A L, Real Clear Politics. And you can, it's for me, I go there cuz it's a one stop shop for all the national polls. And I don't have to jump around and go to a billion different places. I can go to one place and it's all there. Uh, in the South Carolina poll, Biden is overwhelmingly. I'll say it again, pardon me. In the South Carolina poll, uh, Joe Biden is overwhelmingly, overwhelmingly uh, ahead, 38%. The closest challenger is Warren at 14%. Uh, but okay, and, and that's the South. I get it. I get it. Nationally, Biden is still polling ahead of Warren at 29%. Warren, this is an average, 23% for Warren, Sanders 15.4%, Boot Edge Edge at 5.6%. So really, you got a top three. Biden, Warren and Sanders. Uh, Boot Edge Edge, Harris, O'Wark and Yang. I, I'm, I'm glad they're in the conversation. It, it brings some diversity to the conversation and then you can have different opinions. Um, but statistically, it's looking like it ain't really happening. Biden, Warren, Sanders. I, i- if the trend holds, that's who the Democrat nominee is going, that's the group that the Democrat nominee is gonna come from. If this holds, that is the group. So I wanna give you a heads up on uh, what's going on. Bunky writes, we be model citizens. Also, we've been broken off reparations like the Chinese have. TNT writes, we become so brainwashed that the government that we collectively pay for has the audacity to tell us they can't secure our future. But we most certainly taking care of their future. That's why they asked us to stay and they are literally getting ground in walkers and hover rounds. Hmm. Drop writes, $1,000 is the pay cut for some people. Really? In terms of getting a government stipend? Well, then I think this will be additional to even what those people are getting, if I understand uh, Andrew Yang's plan. The way I believe I do. I, I don't think he's talking about cutting anything. This would be an additional stipend from a different source. So this would be $1,000 plus. Uh, for those who I guess uh, would qualify for such things, for such things. Quote, we have a freedom dividend of $1,000 a month. It actually recognizes the work that is happening in our families and communities. Well, I'll tell you one thing, man, the rich folks got all the money. There's a, there's a concentration of wealth in our, in our city, in our county and our state and our country. You know, all the money is heavily concentrated in the hands of a few people. So is it not the government's role to try to get some of that back and spread the wealth? I don't know about you, man, but whenever, when more people. I don't know about you, man, but whenever, when more people are happy and eating and, and, and thriving, everybody's happy. When everybody's eating, everybody's happy. When half the people are eating, that means half the people are unhappy. When only a few people are eating, uh, the people gonna rise up. So you tell me, so did any Democrat candidate speak specifically to the needs of black Americans asking for a friend? Forty million of them. That's funny. Said forty million of them, huh? Um, let's see here. I think I got. Uh, oh, thank you, Pat, for being here. Appreciate you. Uh, Nathan, seriously, thank you for opening airways and bringing on a guest we need to hear and speak to. Absolutely. Uh, Mason Muller writes, when's your big announcement, Nate? Coming soon. You'll hear it here first before I put it out to the world. See, that's funny. He went to big. That is hilarious. Uh, let me jump inside the friends page real quick here. Uh. It solidified. Okay, there we go. Oh, man, okay. I'm on Facebook. I see a lot of folks, man, got into the debate. Uh, they was better than me, man. I hope they enjoyed it. Hope they had a good time. That's great. Uh, I'm inside the friends page. Post office employee finds two missing children in two weeks doing mail route. I love my job. What? The hell? Oh, yeah, great. Um, David Banner wants the black community to focus on itself and not on Donald Trump, which I agree with a thousand percent. Um. But I think that uh, you can do both. Black woman shot dead in her home by white cop was holding a gun. That's what's been reported. So apparently Tay, as her friends called her and her family called her affectionately. Um, she got her firearm and then she went to the back and she was trying to see what the noise was. And you know, maybe that was the, the weapon that we saw that was being um, put out there on the news. Remember I told you, we all saw it. It was just grainy. It really wasn't sharp photograph, image, video of what appeared to be a weapon. And it's like, oh, they trying to focus on the fact that she had a weapon and then use that to help get the officer off, but it hasn't gotten that way so far. So like I said, I'm not willing to jump on and go one way or another with this. I don't know what's gonna happen. All I'm saying is I can see um, already that things are shaping just a little bit differently here. It's a little bit differently. The community has come together to raise over $200,000 for the family of the Fort Worth police shooting victor. Um, uh, Tatiana Jefferson. Raised $200,000 already, huh? That's great. That's great to hear. Uh, Southern Dallas group openly armed to patrol neighborhoods. Funny how we time, things that happened in the past come back. So now you got community activists down in Dallas that are doing armed patrols. They're doing armed patrols. Shout to James Pitts for the, for the vine. I appreciate it. Uh, community activists say they are tackling rising crime on their own. A group of men in the Highland Hills area of Dallas are tired of crime in their community, so they're arming themselves. Quote, we are not here policing or being security guards. We are coming as brothers. And they're calling themselves community engagement activists. They say they are looking to stop trouble and crime. Okay, I respect it. Hope it works well for them down there. That might be. I saw a video, an interview with a black female that lived in a neighborhood down in Fort Worth. And she said, we need to police our own neighborhoods. So now you got these brothers that stepping up to police their own neighborhoods. Beautiful. Uh, what is this? NASA admits to spraying lithium on unsuspecting population. Is that right? You ever heard of the chemtrails? Chemical trails? That's what they mean by that. Um, the age of Trump is producing more black gun owners. I'm reading directly from the friends page and other sources here. Just to give you a sense of what's been out there, may or may not be on your radar screen. You may or may not be interested in, in looking for this on your own. The age of Trump is producing more black gun owners. Yeah. Yeah, it certainly is. It certainly is. And that's why we started a CCW class ourselves. Again, our next class is gonna be a tactical class in November. That'll be our next class. And uh, I'm more than willing to set up another, a basic CCW class as well. It'll probably be next year, uh, but let me again check with the guys just to make sure. Uh, if we're gonna do it, um, well, we'll talk about it then, but I think in November, we're definitely gonna do the next sort of training, the tactical training course. And if you're interested, uh, as soon as I get that date, I'll put it out to you. And uh, we can get the confirmations and get it started. We're not gonna be out there for eight hours. I say we go out for maybe three hours, two hours, maybe like that on the range. Get some shots in, get some training in, uh, so we can be, um, so we can be proficient and we can come back home. That's what it's all about. Have a great day, everybody. I really appreciate you being here. We cut up on 11 AM. I meant to eat Lynn at about 10:30. Have an excellent day. Uh, check out that interview. Please like and share it. Share it with your friends. Share it with anybody that is going to be, um, uh, they're gonna be voting in the upcoming election in November. It will be very, very valuable information for them. And then they could put all the interviews together and put it all together and hopefully make an informed decision about who they think uh, should represent them. Have an excellent day. I'll catch up with you real soon. My name is Nathan Ivy and I'm out.